I'd like to call this public session to order. We have a quorum. This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. I will now identify closed session topics, recommended expulsions, recommended reinstatements, recommended reviews, continued expulsion, public employee assignment, reassignment appointment, public employee discipline dismissal, release complaints, conference with labor negotiator, conference with legal counsel, existing lit, conference with real property negotiators, anticipated lit and public employee mid mid-year evaluation superintendent. Public comment on closed session items, general public comment and any closed session item will be heard at this time pursuant to board policy. The board may limit individual comments to no more than three minutes and individual topics to 20 minutes. It is recommended you begin your comments by stating your name. There is no public comment. We will now adjourn to closed session. Evening. I like to convene this regular session. I'd like to welcome our student board representative, Maui Louise. Okay, you're gonna have to clarify. What high school?
Golden West.
Gold, oh, Golden West, okay. Don't say that. 3.2, I'm gonna introduce the interpreter. Gus Mora will speak as the Spanish interpreter for this meeting. Meeting attendees who would like to listen to Spanish interpretation of the meeting, please pick up the headphones from the table located in the back of this meeting room. This announcement will now be shared in Spanish.
Gus Mora servirá como intérprete en español para esta reunión. Invitamos a los asistentes de la reunión que deseen escuchar la interpretación en español y por audífonos a la mesa ubicada al fondo de estas salas de reuniones.
Thank you. This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recordings or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Members of the public wanting to provide public comment on items listed on tonight's agenda, we recommend you fill out the public comment form located in the table in the back of the room. Please hand the completed form to Delia Smart, board manager, before the item comes up upon the agenda. We recommend you complete a separate form for each agenda item you'd like to comment on. Ms. Smart is sitting at the table in the back of the room. Members of the public providing public comment, please use the microphone on the stand located in the front of the room. I will lead the pledge of allegiance. Please stand. 3.5, I'm going to report action taken in closed session during closed session on a motion by board member Viegas, a second by board member Odo. The board voted to order the dismissal of classified employee number 21446 in the position of bus driver. That was unanimous. And then the board took the following action in closed session on a motion by board member Naylor, the second by board member Caseper Saleno. There was a unanimous vote to approve the settlement agreement between the district and the parties representing OAH case 2023080307. 3.8, the following are revisions to the agenda. Numbers 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, 6.12, 11.1. May I have a motion to adopt the board's meeting agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
On a motion by board member Viegas, second by Caseper Saleno. All in favor? Student board representative votes yes and motion passes unanimously. Tonight, we have a student performance with Green Acres Middle School Jazz Band Assistant Superintendent Mark Thompson.
I'm sure they're in the other room, but I'm not sure if they can hear me. Mrs. Phillips, are they ready? Perfect. All right, the Green Acres Jazz Band under the direction of David Morris has had a wonderful start to the school year. The band participated in the return of the A&W Cruise Nights on Mooney Boulevard on October 7th, and have had a wonderful fall concert last Thursday, August 10th. The jazz band is proud to be tonight's entertainment and hope you enjoy their musical selections. So at this time, let's give them a hand as they walk in. Board, at this time, would you guys move yourselves out front? Mr. Morris, give us just a moment. They'll step out and so they can see them from the front side. And thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening, everyone. David Morris, my favorite jazz fan. We have two tunes for you tonight. Our first one is called Blues Machine, and it features a few solos. We have London on clarinet, Tyler on trombone, and Toby on the alto saxophone. We hope you enjoy our first selection of Blues Machine.
All right. Well, thank you to Green Acres Jazz Band and to Mr. Morris. And as they begin to exit out, parents, you're welcome to stay with us for the next couple hours and enjoy our meeting. But if you did not, and you would like to exit out with your students, you may do so at this time. Thank you so much and well done. That's an amazing sounding chicken, whatever that was, at the end, I thought. So thank you guys so much and have a great evening.
Thank you, Green Acres. That was wonderful. We're gonna move on in our agenda. 4.1 Spotlight on good things happening in the district. Superintendent Shrum.
All right. Well, good evening, Board President Gamoyen and our board and our community. Also, again, great job to Green Acres. Love beginning our board meetings, grounding us in what we're here about, which is our students. And so, great to see that talent. All right. Very excited about where we are as a district. Of course, October is a long month, and I want to acknowledge that. It's kind of as you get through October. Okay, well, is November coming? Will there be a break? So I know typically, as we get toward the end of October, people are a little tired. But we have a lot of exciting things happening in our district. So excited to spotlight those this evening. Always, of course, beginning with our compass slide, our foundation, our vision and mission, core beliefs and commitments, as we talk about the great things happening within our district. And so here we go. Obviously, we've got quite a few things that we want to spotlight. To begin with literacy, a lot of work happening in our schools around literacy. Several schools this past month hosted literacy nights, special themes. We have some photos from Viva Blunt and Annie R. Mitchell Literacy Nights. Riverway Elementary had a special Q&amp;A with one of the actors from the book Holes that was later turned into a movie. And I remember using that book when I was a teacher. So what a great opportunity for the sixth grade class read the book and then got to take turns asking the actor questions. So what a great opportunity to bring literacy to life. Had the opportunity to see some of our loft events. Now, these are Leaders of Tomorrow. These are held at our schools. These are about students that are in our different pathways. And so they get to learn and interact with individuals who are in the field that do the work that they might be interested in. And so they get to learn about, you know, what it takes to be a district attorney or an attorney, or what it takes to be a fire officer, a medical examiner, or what it might be. And so we work with local industry partners who provide our high school students with that experience and insight into the work they do every day. Always impressive because the students come prepared with questions to really learn more about what does it take to get to where these individuals are who volunteer their time to come and speak to our kids. So thank you for doing that. And our very own board member Megan C. Paracelino was also there representing the public defender's office. So we appreciate that as well. So great opportunity. Spotlight also continuing on STEM nights at Pinkham Elementary. Our teaching and learning team in partnership with Southern California Edison hosted the first of several science, technology, engineering, and math nights. We had over 100 families attend the event that included 12 hands-on activities and take-home materials. So we encourage our community to take advantage of these upcoming opportunities. And thank you to our teams here at the district office for working to put that together. And then the school sites, putting that in place for families and students to come and get to participate. Visual and Performing Arts, huge shout out to our educational foundation. Every year they hold a showcase held at Golden West High School where all of our bands, our dance teams, our cheer squads come and perform. And it's a great night, a great evening, food, lots of families. And it's also fun for the kids because they get to see, oftentimes they're performing, right? So they don't necessarily get to see everyone else's shows and routines. And so it's a great opportunity to do that as well. And just highlight the amazing VAPA programs that we have in our district. So congratulations. Thank you to our Ed Foundation for that. Also want to congratulate Golden West Band. They received first place in the Bakersfield Driller Showcase. So congratulations to them. Expanded learning opportunities. We talk a lot about ELOP, and we talk a lot about it because it's doing such amazing things for our students, our Extended Learning Opportunity Program. And this is where we're able to provide opportunity for students after school with our partners from the community and others to engage in arts, sports, academic support, whatever it might be. And so recently, and we've not had drama in elementary. And so this is just another way to bring experiences for our students. So you see some pictures here from students at Annie R. Mitchell performed The Lion King. Also recently had our first ever football tournament kicked off on Highland. Of course, our new turf there. Winter session signups are happening. So families, parents, look into this. This is amazing opportunity for your students after school. Great things are happening. They don't have to go home at 3 o'clock. We have a lot of great activities happening after. And next weekend, or weekend after this one, is our very first soccer tournament. So all elementary schools are going to be participating in the tournament on a Saturday. So it's going to be exciting and looking forward to that. Again, thanks to our ELOP and all the support and partners that are helping to put that together. Community outreach, again, very important community events that took place this month. We have several that we're highlighting here. Over 1,500 spectators viewed 125 cars at the Golden West High School Car Show. Thank you to Mr. Rahi Heeb for that. VTEC, several of us had the chance to go there, hosted their annual harvest festival, culminating in event of their homecoming week. Over 400 community members were in attendance. And Crowley Elementary held its first ever fall harvest carnival in seven years. Over 10 community groups, donors, and parent volunteers made this happen. Thank you to our staff and community that go above and beyond to coordinate these events and immerse themselves into our school community. So one of the fun parts of October are a lot of these events that happen in our schools. College and career readiness. Recently, this is new this year. So at the Rawhide Stadium this past week, every eighth grader got to go on a field trip, who doesn't love a field trip, and to the Rawhide Stadium. And all around the stadium were all of our college and career pathways showcasing what they do. And so this was the chance for the eighth graders to go and see, oh, here are some things. Maybe I'm interested in a medical pathway. Maybe I'm interested in film. Maybe I'm interested in, I mean, it was just, it actually blew me away, the number of things that we offer in our schools that were showcased for our middle school students. But what was even more spectacular was listening to our high school students articulate why these students should come into that pathway. And so they were able just to talk about what they're learning, how it's going to benefit them when they go into college or career. It was absolutely amazing and look forward to making this event even bigger and better in the upcoming year. So just a huge shout out to all of our teachers, our sponsors, our students, especially that helped put that event together. And of course, our college and career readiness team here at the district, big undertaking. Our transportation team as well to put something like this together. And they did a phenomenal, absolutely phenomenal job. I was sold. I was ready to join VTEC right there and enter one of their pathways. The kids did such a good job convincing me. And Assistant Superintendent Thompson was there at the same time. We're like, okay, we're ready to go back to school. Sign us up. Spotlight also, our homecoming. Also in October, a lot of our homecoming school, all of our schools held their homecoming games. Great night for our community alma maters to come back and talk about the memories that they've made. Also, speaking of those memories and our students showcasing their talents at the Tulare County Fair, our FFA teams, congratulations to our Future Farmers of America. They all achieved great marks at the fair. Our students work hard all summer and even throughout the year on raising an animal or learning these things, or whatever it is that they're going to showcase. A lot of work, dedication and passion on the weekends, go into showcasing what they're able to do. And so congratulations to all of those students. And we just have the best FFA instructors and advisors. And they're always such, just an awesome opportunity to hear them and see them interact with our students. Very proud of what they do every day. Also wrapping up our Hispanic Heritage Month, over 20%, or excuse me, 20,071% of our students come from a Hispanic background. And so it's very important that we take time to recognize the different contributions from cultures that help make us a great community. And so many of our schools celebrated National Hispanic Heritage Month in many different ways, highlighting customs, having different events, doing different education opportunities, lesson planning, facts, and engaging so students can learn about the different cultures that make up our great community. Also, last month, we held our very first state of our district. We were excited to showcase the many great things happening in our district. We had students performing. We were able to show off some of the results of our renovations or modernizations, Mount Whitney Gym and others. And anytime you get to hear kids singing and speak, it just, you know, again, is about why we're here. And so looking forward to this in some shape, form, or fashion becoming a yearly opportunity for us to share with our business community, our public, our businesses, our politicians and others that we have great things happening in Viso Unified. And as proud as we are of our city, we should also be proud of our school district. So a great opportunity to highlight the great things happening in our district. And speaking of that, one of the things that we knew, that we heard from the community was how we need to focus on phonics. And coming in, we recognized a year and a half ago, two years ago, we didn't have a coordinated approach across the district to teaching something as fundamental as phonics. And we were really leaving it just up to happenstance, right? Or what individual schools may do. And so we realized as part of a foundation of literacy, we needed to make sure we had an explicit literacy program, phonics program in our kindergarten through second grade classrooms. And so thanks to our board, we brought our teachers together, went through an adoption process, and came out with a program called Foundations, which has now been implemented in every single classroom, kindergarten through second grade, all across our district. And what we wanted to focus on this year was not just, here's the program, go and do, but how we all work together and show that this really isn't just something we expect our teachers to do alone. We expect, and I expect, our district team to partner with teachers to make this successful. And we're just a few months in, right? So it's brand new. We're still learning it. But one of the things that we did as cabinet team was to go out and teach a phonics lesson so that we could experience what it was like to have to study a little bit, look at the teacher's guide, prepare a lesson, and go in and deliver. And so you see some images there. And I want to point out, this wasn't just those members of cabinet who maybe lead a department that's connected to academics. This was the entire cabinet, including the superintendent, chief operations officer, business officer, human resources, all going into classrooms and delivering a lesson. And it's a little humbling when you do that because you realize just what goes into being prepared to deliver effective instruction every day. And coming out of this, as a cabinet team, we came back and debriefed. Well, what did we see and hear? What could we do to further support our teachers? And we heard some things. We heard about how long it was taking to do lessons. We heard about, how do I fit this into an already tight timeline? And we realized there were some things we needed to back up and help clarify for our teachers to be successful. And so that's the benefit of when you get to go into the classroom, you see and hear those things. And then the district team came back and began to work on, well, what, now that we know this and have heard this and experienced it, what now can we do to continue to support the teachers in the classroom? So we have a short little video we want to show about this experience.
When I first heard that district leadership was interested in coming into my classroom, I was excited. I was, I felt recognized. I felt like they wanted to actually be in the room where learning happens. And it was motivating for both me and my students to know someone special, someone who makes decisions for us, is interested in coming in and experiencing what we experience every day.
This was something new to us. I've been in the district for 11 years, and this is the first time that I've heard this happening. And I was excited and happy to be picked for this.
I was especially nervous but excited when I heard Mr. Shrum would be coming to my class. I thought it was a great opportunity just for them to come in and make those connections with us so that we feel that we're supported in this new phonics program.
I thought they did a great job. My students enjoyed having somebody else come in. And it was a seamless transition from me to the cabinet members. And it made me realize that it's important that we follow the curriculum with fidelity. And that way, anybody can come in and do our lessons.
I felt that we were validated, that having, you know, board members, Mr. Shrum come out, that they're hearing us, that they're here to support us, that they recognize that this Foundations program is valuable. It's a great asset for us to be helping our kids learn phonics.
We felt stronger. We felt recognized.
My students still ask to this day, how is Mr. Thompson doing? Is he teaching? Is he a teacher yet? Because they fully believe that he was working hard just like us every single day. And so they don't forget about you. They are going to remember you when you make those big decisions. And so we hope that you remember us as well.
So. And again, you know, you learn a lot. And we're working on becoming teachers. I think that was important. And, you know, the kindergarten, first and second grade teachers will understand what I mean when I say upon reflection, I still am not sure despite all of that practice that I got the dictation sentences correct. So I've reflected on that. And I know if I go back out and deliver, I'll be better prepared the next time. But I do want to thank our teachers for opening their doors to let us come in, to let us experience. Thank you for partnering with us. And I also just want to give a shout out to those teachers as well for working to implement a new program. It's not easy. And we certainly know there are things we need to improve on. But at the end of the day, our kids are going to be stronger readers because of this foundation and the emphasis on phonics that we're providing in our primary grades. So thank you to our teachers and also good job cabinet team on instruction. There were some nervous adults, I can tell you, about going in. But the teachers and the students made us feel very welcome. And so I appreciate that. Continuing the theme with our students here, student participation. Let me see if that clicked. Oh, there we go. Recently held our student advisories. And so as the board and community are aware, we have a superintendent student advisory. Made up of elementary, middle and high school students from every school across our district. And last year we began this and we met a few times and we met via Zoom. And one of the things that we heard from the students was that they wanted more opportunity to meet frequently, more frequently and in person. And so we started the year on Zoom and we had the students think about what are some concerns you have about school? What's happening? And so with students, you know, all the way you heard everything from what we eat at lunch to recess to, to fights or other things that may be happening on campus. And so they identified things that they want to talk about. So this week, we brought all of the students here to the district office. And spent a few hours working through what they identified. And one of the great things about being here was it wasn't just me working with the students. So they identified safety as something they wanted to talk about. And so we had our coordinator of safety and security come in and answer questions from the team. From the students about what's going on and what can we do? And as we go through the year, what's going to happen is the students are going to engage in problem solving. So they're going to go back, they're going to interview other students, they're going to come back, we're going to meet virtually and in Zoom and in person again. And they're going to work through what can we do to address some of the things that they identified? Working with the district office personnel who lead those divisions or those departments. And then the students are going to help generate solutions. And then in the spring, they're actually going to come and present to the board. Some of the concepts that they identified and some of the potential solutions for us to consider. So I'm excited about the process. I think it's going to be fun. And, and it turned out to be something worthwhile, right? They're not just talking about problems. They're actually going to have to help us figure out what do we do about it? And so I look forward to continuing to engage with our student advisories throughout the year. And bringing them here in the spring, going to be fun. District attendance has been a focus. Proud to say, as you'll see in the quarterly report, we're making progress here. Our family and community resource center recently held an attendance competition with all elementary schools. And the chance to have an A and W truck come to their school had celebratory events all throughout the district. These photos are from Golden Oak Hurley, who celebrated I am the USD theme. And also Houston, want to give a shout out to Houston Elementary and their partner neighborhood church who put together the best day ever. And several of us had a chance to go. They had a tablecloth, red carpet lunch for students. They had rallies. It was just a true community. A lot of fun snacks, games, competitions, decorations, a great, great day at Houston. Hurley Elementary though, took first place overall with ninety-six percent attendance on that day. Houston took second place and Elbow Creek took third. All schools saw a drastic increase in attendance for last year. So thank you to our students, staff and families for focusing on being present every day. We continue to work on our safety campaigns here in the district. Everyone's aware of this is something we've been working on, whether it's our active shooter training to making sure we have a centralized way along with other school systems within Tulare County. For students to be able to report something, the say something campaign. And so as we continue to advance this, there's a parent night this week. We now are moving into our student education phase. So last year, last spring, we trained all of our adults on active shooter. This year, age appropriate lessons will be delivered for our students concerning that topic. And although it's not something we want to have to do, we know it's a reality of our world and we have to do it, right? And so we're having apparent nights that information is being sent out if parents are curious about what we're going to teach students. And so if they have a concern with that, they're certainly welcome to reach out to their administrator. They can choose to opt out. However, I would just encourage families to think about that because should there be an emergency, you can't really opt out of that happening. So we do have age appropriate lessons. We're looking forward to those being delivered. And also in the coming weeks, you're going to be hearing more about our say something, see something, say something campaign. Almost every school district in Tulare County is part of this. And so we're, we're excited about this and it will give all of our schools and all of our students one number that they can contact. And it's a national, you know, they contact us, all that stuff goes on behind the scenes. But the point being if someone needs help or sees something, it's yet another way for that to be reported. And so more information, their tips are monitored twenty-four seven by the crisis center and they notify law enforcement and school officials when needed. And so we're looking forward to that added layer of consistency when it comes to how to report things, not only in Visalia, but all the way across Tulare County as well. This is just an FYI. Last month, we shared with the board our data, what it was looking like for CASP and LPAC data. Tomorrow is the official state release. So if you're curious where we were, you can go back and watch last month's board presentation. There are no significant changes to what we estimated our reports to be. I think we were within one percent or less than one percent difference. And so great work to Rick Hamilton, Heskeya and that team for working on getting that information. This is just a FYI to our board that that does become public on the state websites tomorrow. Looking forward to this, one of the things that we heard from our community and our board is an opportunity to really have better engagement. Because as we know, when you're at a board meeting, it's, it's the board. It's a meeting of the board. It's business in public, right? It's not really an opportunity to have that authentic engagement, that back and forth conversation. This is a meeting of the board in public, right? The board's business. So we wanted to create an avenue where that can happen. And so I'm excited announcing our first ever conversation with board member. And so starting in, I believe it's next week, they kick off. All across the district, board members either singularly or in teams are going to be meeting with members of the community. And so this information has been shared, we're sharing it again. Those that are interested in coming are welcome to submit a question ahead of time. Our board members and district staff will be prepared to talk about that. And then of course, there'll be questions taken from the floor as well. I believe there are going to be some snacks. There's childcare and some other things that are going to be provided. You see a schedule up there. And we're looking forward to this and we're going to learn from this first experience. We'll adjust, modify and see what goes well and what we might need to improve on. But I think it's a great opportunity for our community to come and have authentic dialogue and conversation with our board. This is something that's been very much on the board's mind and the desire to do this. And so looking forward to this opportunity. So you can find information about this on our district website. And of course, our High Five Friday continued. Once a month, our district team goes out and gives a high five to our kids and our staff. We were at Conyer in Washington at the end of the last month. And obviously October has been a busy month for a lot of different recognitions. And so these are just some of the things that as a district, our teachers engaged in, our school sites engaged in either education about or lessons about or just different things that went on at school sites. And so National Custodian Appreciation Day. October's Principal Appreciation Month. And so obviously we appreciate our, our district team, our staff, our custodians, our principals. National Bullying Prevention Month, a lot of kindness and other activities that continue. National Voter Education Week. And so educating our students about the importance of the civic duty of voting. Also on social media, and I can't read that up there. So I'm going to look right here. Our attendance campaign, Hispanic Heritage Month, again, we mentioned Suicide Prevention Awareness Week, and we had some great heart activities occurring at every campus where students were putting positive thoughts up. State of the District, of course, Native American Day, Loft Highlights, we talked about that. Also some of our social media, you'll see our Washington and Conyer High Five. We also released a series of data videos. And so everything from reclassification to how we did on CASP. We launched a website, excited about the, the potential for the website, sorry. A podcast, excited about the opportunity to just another way to connect with our community and families. We mentioned voter education week. And so we had a student video that was put together. And then I mentioned the data wrap up as well. Conversation with the board, we've shared about that. Our CTE program and our Hispanic Heritage Month are also some of the things that we highlighted at schools and on social media. So it has been an amazing but busy month. And we look forward to finishing October strong and moving into November. So Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? All right. Thank you Superintendent Shrum. Four point two K two literacy and math one update. Director of Teaching and Learning, Breann Phillips.
Right. Waiting on our presentation. Just a moment. All right. Good evening, Board President Goboyan, Superintendent Shrum, board members, VUSD staff and community. I'm Breann Phillips, Administrator of Teaching and Learning. And today I'm here to provide you with an overview of two focus areas for Visalia Unified. These two focus areas are K two literacy and math one. Knowing that all students can achieve at high levels and demonstrate continuous growth. Our focus on K two literacy and math one ensures a strong foundation for all learners. You will see tonight that we engage in cycles of continuous improvement to empower our teachers and staff to ensure the success of each and every student. We will begin with K two literacy, specifically focusing on phonics and then move on to an overview of math one. In our theory of action, the board directs us to ensure a strong foundation for all learners through consistency in the following areas. Balanced models of instruction and assessment. Grade appropriate standards based instruction focused on authentic student engagement. Aligned, high quality, board approved resources and research based systems of support. You will see tonight that we are relentlessly intentional in our focus on K two literacy and math one. To take conditions set by this board to align our arrows to positively impact student learning through the previously mentioned actions. K two literacy is made up of multiple components. Through balanced instruction, our students demonstrate core knowledge and skills in engaging in daily phonics instruction and decoding words with a variety of strategies. Students use their learning and core knowledge and skills to demonstrate critical thinking through reading and comprehending grade level text. Expressing opinions about reading and making connections across text. Our intentional phone focus on phonics instruction is aligned to our balanced instruction models to build our students' core knowledge and skills. VUSD has a milestone of all students reading on grade level by the end of second grade. In the fall of 2022, through an evaluation of our program, we recognized that there was a need for a robust phonics program to support our teachers in achieving this milestone. Our focus on developing our foundational skills through phonics led to the adoption of foundations. Phonics supports our students in decoding and encoding skills, word recognition, spelling proficiency, reading fluency, comprehension, phonemic awareness, preventing reading difficulties and building foundational literacy skills. In the spring of let me switch my deck. Sorry. In the spring of 2023, the, the USD's phonics adoption committee recommended the Wilson's foundations, Wilson's Language Foundations for Board Adoption. In May of 2023, the program was adopted. This adoption allowed teaching and learning to focus on program implementation. The needs that are for our sites as well as our teachers and students. Implementation to fidelity provides all students the same learning opportunities. By September first of this year, two hundred and thirty-eight K two teachers had been trained in foundations. In addition, we had twenty-two principals engage in training and twenty-nine assistant principals engage in training. At one, a one-time training does not meet the ongoing need of support with new programs or even existing programs. Knowing this, all K two teachers are engaging in six additional professional learning sessions throughout this academic school year. As a district, you heard earlier, we are all in on phonics. Our cabinet team engaged in our own phonics instruction. Each of us, if you called us up, we can share the word of the day. Which was quite challenging, but also quite fun. It reminded us of why we got into education. Beginning this academic year, each Visalia Unified School has an instructional coach. Our elementary instructional coaches are pivotal in supporting our teachers as they learn alongside our teachers. Our instructional coaches help our teachers implement through modeling parts of lessons, providing feedback to teachers, but most importantly, being a sounding board for the teachers to bounce ideas off of, to collaborate best practices, to bring challenges to and work through them. Our instructional coaches are partners for our teachers with the ultimate goal of positively impacting student learning and achieving our milestone of all students reading on grade level by the end of second grade. In January, we will be launching our phonics assessment. This will allow teachers to not have to wait for our next BAS assessment, which is Benchmark Assessment System. In order to determine if students are on grade level or if they've fallen just below grade level and need some additional support. Teachers will be able to intervene and be able to provide students support just in time. We additionally have a phonics advisory committee. This is composed of teachers, instructional coaches and content specialists as well as student success teachers. Their role is to bring feedback to the team based on trends and patterns. They will then share their concerns and the teams will make proactive decisions to support implementation of strong phonics instruction district wide. With all initiatives, we know that there is a cycle of continuous improvement. Noting this in collaboration with the instructional coaches and regular feedback from teachers. We are developing ongoing tips to support our teachers with an effective implementation. These tips are referred to as foundation tips, our real time support. We value our teachers' time and strive to provide support timely so that they can focus on instruction and student learning. We have multiple measures of monitoring student progress. However, each assessment provides crucial information about each student and teachers are able to make instructional adjustments to ensure every student is learning and progressing on grade level as well as intervene when students need support. Our focus on K two literacy is essential to supporting students reaching our VUSD literacy milestone. We are seeing gains in our students and out of the many positive reflections, I will leave you with this quote from a K two teacher. Students are recognizing letters and sounds independently. Many students are spelling words on their own or attempting to spell words by tapping out the sounds they hear. Students are becoming comfortable with building sentences and remembering what every sentence needs. We'll now shift our focus onto math one. Oh, go back one. Oh. I did jump to. Thank you. We'll now shift our focus to math one. VUSD's graduating class of 2028 will meet our graduation requirement of three years or thirty units of mathematics. Knowing that math one is a gateway course to mathematics, science and graduation. VUSD is committed to a district alignment of math one to build a solid math foundation for our students. The alignment of math one begins with our balanced instructional models. Where students demonstrate their learning through core knowledge and skills and procedural skills and fluency that balanced with critical thinking. The focus of math one will result in high quality, consistent instruction across our student, across our district. Every student will engage in learning the same priority standards through the same scope and sequence. Every student will be able to monitor their learning through common benchmarks and show continuous growth over time. Through a common grading scale, students' grades mean the same thing across the district. Our focus in math one helped VUSD to examine our past professional learning practices and develop systems for every math one teacher in VUSD to engage in unit studies, learning progressions, data analysis and reflective practices. I'd like to take you now on a journey to the alignment in math one. In the spring of 2023, our math one lead teachers, which is one teacher from every middle school and high school engaged in identifying VUSD priority standards. They additionally developed our scope and sequence and a blueprint, which is the standards, depth of knowledge and number of questions for our first benchmark assessment. In May of 2023, for the first time ever, every math one teacher in VUSD alongside with administration came together for a math one launch day. On this day, teachers engaged in discussion of On this day, teachers engaged in discussion of course alignment between middle and high school. This alignment is critical as our middle school students taking Math 1 will have this course on their high school transcripts. On this day, teachers engaged in Unit 1 discussions, collaborating on instructional practices. Additionally, the teachers came to consensus on a common grading scale for all of our Math 1 classes. This grading scale assures a student that a letter grade at one school is the same at another school. In September of this year, VUSD students engaged in the first of six benchmark assessments. This assessment was focused on our priority standards learned in Unit 1. Our benchmark assessment is both summative and informative as it provides students and teachers a snapshot of where students are at in their learning, as well as identifying concepts to reengage students in their learning. As mentioned in our, as mentioned in our embedded practices in our balanced instructional models, students develop and embrace a growth mindset through reflection opportunities to show growth in a supportive learning environment. Our benchmark assessments provide our students the opportunities to reflect on their learning through multiple opportunities, they will show growth over time. Shortly after the closing of the benchmark window, Math 1 teachers, instructional coaches, and site administration engaged in a day of data analysis, reflection, collaboration, and forward planning. This data analysis allows our teachers to discover where students have areas of misconceptions and informs their next instructional moves. Most recently, in fact, earlier today, our Math 1 teachers, Lead Teachers, came together to work through our spring semester scope and sequence, assessment blueprints, and learning progressions. This cycle of learning will continue for our six benchmark assessments. It affords our teachers the opportunity to drill down into the standards, develop lessons that support our students in learning the rigor of the standards, as well as to analyze student performance and reflect on our teaching and determine how to reengage students in learning on standards they are not demonstrating proficiency on yet. We are relentlessly intentional with our focus on Math 1, the alignment of the course, studying standards, and understanding the progressions of student learning. Today I had a discussion with a teacher and she stated to me, "The work we have put into Math 1 has provided a roadmap for student learning. This alignment has focused student learning and targeted our instruction. Our assessment provides clear guidance to keep students on the road to learning success. I know where we are heading and how to get our students there with confidence." We are relentlessly intentional with our focus on Math 1, the alignment of this course and the standards. This alignment will lead to high-quality, consistent instruction across VUSD and Math 1, resulting in all students achieving at high levels and demonstrating continuous growth. Questions?
Questions or comments from the board?
I just want to say thank you to all of our teachers and administrators working hard. I know that change isn't always easy and it took us as a board and in previous boards, a lot of discussion on even just the third year of math. And so looking at and really seeing all the productiveness that's going on to achieve better results with respect to math and phonics, I think we're going to see that payoff in the next couple of years. So, thank you.
Thanks, Breann. 4.3 Visalia Unified School District, 2023-24 school year Quarter 1 Report. Superintendent Shrum.
Good evening, President Gamoyan, Board members, and our public. We're pleased to present our first quarter for the 23-24 school year on some of our key metrics that we're monitoring and using as a tool, as a guide to see how we're doing and how we're performing as a school system. As you will recall, this is a new report that we started last year in response to questions not only from community but board as to how do we know the investments we're making are working? How do we know if our students are growing? And how are we being transparent about where we are as a district? And so out of that grew or out of that conversation grew, I guess, or was born, our quarter, a report that we give four times a year. And so we're pleased tonight to present our first quarter report. Again, you're going to hear from each of our divisions of how we're working to make sure our foundations come to life and that we live out our mission of every student learning every day. And so we'll go through how we're creating the conditions within each report. And so let me, without further ado, get us started with our business services.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, and Superintendent Shrum. I'm here to present the Quarter 1 Report for Business Services. The first area we wanted to go over was budget and finance. Our year-to-date general fund budget versus actuals, our revenues are just under 17% for Quarter 1, which is in line with our three-year historical average of just a little over 18%. Our, under expenditures, we are at just over 20%, which is also pretty close to our three-year historical average. So overall, we are on track. And then this next slide is our expenditures by function. This is showing how we're spending our money. So we are a people business, so as you can see in our instruction and instruction-related services, the top two, that is where the majority of our expenditures are. And then in attendance, we are on track this year to show an increase from last year, 1.2% so far. We are at overall district-wide 94.64%. And then also for the district and charters, we are showing an increase and that is for our unofficial CalPads Month 2. It's an overall increase, but it is pretty flat. And then in our purchasing and print shop, as you can see, we issued just over 12,200 print requests and about 8,600 apparel jobs this quarter. And then also for purchase orders, which are total expenditures, about 85% of our district expenditures is salary and benefits and the remaining 15% are things we buy like services and supplies. So for the first quarter, just under 5,000 POs were issued totaling $16.2 million. And then in technology services, we had 6,869 tickets that were issued, which is about 109, that is a daily average. And then our printer and printing-related tickets accounted for approximately 23% of those. And then we also had a 99% plus uptime for all three of our systems for Power School, our General Internet, and then Tyler Munis. And then these are some of our key continuous improvement steps for Quarter 2. Just to highlight a couple, one of them is going to be our, getting our projections for enrollment and staffing completed in December. This is something we typically do in February, so we are working on getting that provided sooner. And then also completing the district network security evaluation and also implementing those enhancements to our policies and procedures. Now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. DeMaio.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. All right. Well, it is my pet pleasure to talk to you tonight about educational services. And as Kyla suggested just a few moments ago, we're really working hard this year on being data-driven and considering where we are and where we want to go in the future. So the data you're going to be seeing tonight will represent that. So let's start with our Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. Mr. Shrum mentioned some of this earlier, some of the great things we're seeing. But what I wanted to draw your attention to are just some hard numbers. That first number you're going to see up there mentions 11,605 enrollments. That's thus far for the school year. Super exciting for us to be able to see that and also to consider that that means we've got 3,300 children who are involved so far. So that means each child is taking multiple sessions. You'll see some of the choices we have up there that talk about the different opportunities and the different areas we're trying to provide those opportunities for our students. Next up, Family and Community Resources. This one chart right here talks specifically about attendance because we know that is such an important topic. We know that research tells us one of the most important things we can do to ensure student success is to make sure our kids are here every day. I'm very excited to show these numbers here and what you're going to see is a three-year pattern. So the first year was that year right after, on the left, is the year right after we came out of the pandemic. And you'll notice our overall chronic absenteeism rate was 36.8. And as a reminder, chronic absenteeism is any child that has missed more than 10% of the school year, whether it's we've been in school 10 days or 180, it's at the moment in time. So we're comparing where we are currently with where we looked at the end of each of those years. So two years ago, we were at 36.8. Last year, we dropped that to 20% and I'm very happy to say that right now we're trending down at about 15%. And while I'm pleased with that number, that still represents almost 5,000 students in our district that are still struggling with maintaining a positive attendance. So those are the things we need to work on. I also wanted to make sure I put down here the subgroups because again, we know in our district, we care about all students and it's important for us to recognize which of our student groups seem to be struggling the most. So that'll help us know what to do next for them. Also from our Family and Community Resources is the connections that are taking place. We heard loud and clear last year when we were doing Mr. Shrum's events that our families have some specific needs. I just wanted to list for you some of those needs that were created from what we heard. So you'll see that we've got 30 different social worker-student groups that have been created and seven different parent support groups and more growing every day. Again, this is important for us to know what the need is so that we can make sure we're tackling the right issues in our community. Now we're talking about Equity and Student Services. You know, how are we taking care of our students once they're here? Interesting numbers we're looking at. They're not always in the positive direction, but regardless, data is data and it's very educational for us to know what to do. And what I mean by that is you'll see that right now we are trending higher at our suspensions than we were last year. And let me tell you why. At the beginning of the year, we really, really, really were very focused about threats because we know that there's no place in our school sites for making kids feel like they're not safe. So we made sure we took that very seriously this year and that represents a good chunk of what those numbers are. Also, but a positive thing to say is our expulsions. Right now, our expulsions are at a much lower rate than what we saw last year and we attribute a great deal of that to that campaign we did over the summer. Remember, Board, we talked to you about those connections we worked on with our students who were eighth graders moving into ninth grade. Our wonderful high school principals and the EQSS team worked closely together to make sure those students felt a sense of connection. And as a result, we saw a much better instance of behaviors and the needs that led us to that point last year. So that was super encouraging. And I also wanted to make sure you saw that a continued focus for us is the work we're doing with our school site counselors. New data that's off to the side that we didn't have last year is what we call our Individual Learning Plan. Remember, we made a commitment to ensure that every one of our students at the secondary level has a very specific plan that talks to them about their pathway to the future. And that's something that we're going to be working with them on continuously. So I want to be able to show you next time, how have those connections continued to grow? And finally, let's just talk a little bit about Special Education. Again, you know, these numbers probably aren't coming as a surprise. We know across the state, the identification level for students with special education needs are growing. So our district, again, is recognizing that same pattern. We're working hard on what that looks like and how we can interpret that. But a piece of data I did add for you this year that we weren't necessarily looking at last year is that one at the bottom. And what that data piece suggests is how many of our students that are currently in special education, and right now it's about 4,000, how many of those students have a home, spend their time in our general education setting for more than 80% of the day? Right now, about 72% of those students spend 80% or more of their time in that general education setting. We obviously want that number to go up. And what we're hoping to see is all of our students' needs can be met in those different opportunities as long as they have the right type of support. So again, we'll be coming back to those numbers in the future. Now what's coming? Again, I suggested that it's our job now to take a look at where we are to know where we want to go in the future. So what you're going to see is the focus areas we're going to be putting forth for that second quarter. One of the things we recognize in our Expanding Learning Opportunity Program is utilization is not equal nor equitable at our school sites. So we need to do a better job making sure that all of our students are aware of what's available to them and have those opportunities to join. Family and Community Resources, again, their job is really recognizing our students by face and by name and making sure our social workers are providing the supports necessary. And in Equity and Student Services and Special Education, our goal continues to be making sure all of our students get what they need to be successful, whether those are academic needs, behavioral needs, whatever they are. We want to make sure we're working with the student and the school sites to be able to provide the appropriate supports. And with that, I'm going to ask up Mr. Ben Dillon.
Good evening. So I am pleased to share with you a little bit about our Quarter 1 data in Human Resources Development Division. I'll start with what I think most people think of when they think of human resources, which is hiring and recruitment, but that's just one of our departments in our division. So what you're looking at are similar metrics to what we shared previously, specifically looking at the number of new employees hired as well as the number of vacancies throughout this quarter compared to the previous quarter. Some similarities in terms of looking at vacancies. However, what I will point out is that we, we hired a lot of new staff. We did have fewer new classified employees hired this year, but a number of more new certificated employees. The other thing that I'll point out is that you'll see there in the parentheses under 2023 Quarter 1, we do have a large number of special education paraprofessional vacancies. This is very common across the state. I've talked with my colleagues in many other parts of the valley as well as other parts of the state and everyone is searching for the golden ticket to find a way to reduce that, that type of vacancy, as well as a few other of our hard-to-fill positions. We are, I'll talk more about this when we get to our HRD report tonight about some of the things we're doing to, to hopefully improve and be a little more creative about doing that. But that, we are fortunate in that we've worked closely with our partners at CSCA and we currently, right now, have some good partnerships with an outside agency that is helping us staff some of those positions. So although you see 183 vacancies, that actually includes 80 vacancies that we are filling through a contracted partnership. The other, one thing I'm really excited to point out is our, has to do with our fill rate. And so our, our staff who helps support recruiting and then placing our substitute employees, you can see right there, our classified sub-fill rate is, has improved by almost double. We're looking at an overall 52, 59%, excuse me, percent fill rate compared with around 37, 38% last year. And our certificated sub-fill rate continues to, to be in a very, very healthy position, still overall above 8, 98%. And you can see that kind of variance between the vacancies and the absence rates. And then shifting to our, our other departments here in Educator Support. As you know, we are really fortunate to have such an amazing team who helps lead that work in our district. They, as, as many of you know, we, we received full accreditation last year for another seven years for both of our teacher and administrative programs. And so we continue to move forward with a lot of positive work in that area. Still a large number of teachers, actually, one of the things that was really interesting to me when we started pulling data is we really, they're different people, but they're, some of them are different, some of them are the same, right? Year one moved to year two and so on. But still a pretty similar number of folks who are participating and taking advantage of those programs. Just as a reminder, those are programs that if we didn't have this opportunity, people would be paying for this, many of them out of pocket, having to go back to school, go through other programs to actually clear again and obtain those credentials. And then finally, with our Personnel Support Department, this is really the work that we've put in place and we'll talk more about that later tonight with Kevin Mays. But working on our Return to Work Program, how we're helping support employee safety and wellbeing. We are down a bit this year compared to last year. You can see the data there, a little bit of shift and a positive trend in the number of injuries, but the big shift there is the number of days lost from work. And so we're able to continue to better return folks back to work, looking at accommodations, opportunities for folks to continue to be at work, to earn a living, to have access to resources and benefits, and ultimately be able to use those resources to provide support to our kids because that's what it's all about. So a couple of things that we're looking forward to as we continue to go forward. And I'll just kind of look at the high-level pieces here, but our overall goal is to continue to reduce vacancies. Ultimately, our board, you have tasked us through a number of different ways. I think our commitment to student learning, the, the goals and commitments that you've set for us, our beliefs are, you know, really our mission, our vision, all center around making sure that we are doing what we need to be doing to serve students. And as Ms. Johnson just mentioned a minute ago, much of our resources goes to people because we know people make the biggest lives and the lives of little people. because we know people make the biggest lives and the lives of little people. And so our goal is to ensure we have the right people in the right position at the right time. And so we continue to really focus all of these efforts around ensuring that that's what we are doing. So a lot of it is technical pieces, right? Some of it's strengthening processes, procedures, other pieces, talk about recruitment. A big piece that we've looked at is really bringing our practices and our procedures forward into the, into the twenty-first century and really making sure that we are keeping things up to date, that we're being innovative, that we're utilizing technology, but still keeping people at the heart of the work that we do. So at this time, I will turn things over to Assistant Superintendent Mark Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. Good evening. So I'll be focusing in our learning and leadership area. And first I want to start off is we're trying to be very intentional in our focus this year. Mind you, we have many things here, and I just want to give a shout out to our CTE team, early childhood, our BOPA teams, our sports team, our athletics, library, media, and instructional technology. They're integral parts in our district. For this specific metrics for this year, we're really focusing in on our milestones. And so I just want to give a shout out to them as you will not see them in our metrics for tonight. And the learning and leadership, our first one that we want to target in on is on leadership development. We believe that the principal on the school site is instrumental in making sure that students have access to quality education. And with that, we believe coaching is vital for them to be successful. Our ASLs, our administrators of school leadership, go out consistently out to school sites. So I'll give you an example, we had two hundred and fifty-two site visits or coaching visits, which last between an hour to two hours during those times. Last year, during the same range, we had a hundred, a hundred and six. So we really have ramped them up to make it where it's almost weekly that they're out there providing support and partnering with our principals. So one of our big milestones, as Mrs. Phillips shared tonight, was K-two literacy and really focusing in on phonics. So this year, we will be targeting in on some of that data. On quarter one, this is on the iReady Diagnostic Phonics and High Frequency Words that we looked at there. We're looking at this compared to last year to start off this year, we're about one and a half percent higher than last year. But we just got started with our implementation of foundations and the work that we're doing. So I'm really excited to show this as the year continues and as we fully implement and keep working out the kinks of working into a new system and working on that just to really see our numbers continue to move forward and really seeing our students proficient. And again, high-frequency words and phonics. Next, as we're still targeting in on K-two literacy, what will be bringing back? It's still early in the school year, so I don't have the data yet. But I just want to set the frame that we will be bringing back information from BAS, which is a benchmark assessment system and foundations. BAS, if you're familiar with running records, that's that where you're actually explicitly students are reading to you. So we'll be giving that data back as well, along with our foundations, which is our phonics assessments during our next quarter. Next, this slide here is our K-six iReady Diagnostic Number One. So in this, this is an assessment that shows end of the year growth for students. So we'll take it three times of the year. But again, if you're already on grade level, that means you've already mastered the standards for that year. What we're seeing up here is, you know, in reading, we're looking at a fourteen percent of our students that are already there in their classes. And what I'm excited is about forty-two percent of our students are one year behind or they're basically on target to get there for this school year. And in math, we're looking at eleven percent of students that are already there and fifty-one percent of students that are just behind there. Again, we have work to do as we still have thirty-seven percent in reading and we have forty-nine percent, thirty-nine percent in math. But these numbers are indicators, we're about two to three percent up on all of these moving forward. Again, with us being very intentional in our teaching and really our commitment focusing in the great work that teachers are doing with PLCs right now or professional learning communities, they're working together to target in on what students are mastering with essential standards and what they're not. And then actually explicitly teaching those specific standards to ensuring that our students have academic success. So now let's move over to Math One Benchmark, which is the other one that we've been talking about tonight. And on this one, so Mrs. Phillips shared tonight that we've created benchmarks, six-week benchmarks that students will be taking throughout the year. There'll be six of them. This is done for all Math One students in entire, in our entire district. This data here shows student counts, we have about twenty-four hundred students in Math One. The percentage is how many, where students fail, that's the percentage of students in each category. And the performance band is that far right-hand side, which is a percentage to get into that band. As we, I will say it again, we have work to do here. This was our first test that we took this year, a first model of how we're doing this. And so there's a lot of learning and growth that's happening and also a realization that is happening. And so I'm really excited about that work. And as Dr. Vegas mentioned earlier, anything new takes a little bit of time to kind of get that traction. But been very excited with the work that the teachers are doing with students and the collaboration that we're working together to identify needs, gaps, and to build that out. So this is some data here on that. This is the same data, but it's broken down by middle school. So our middle schools do take Math One. They, if the students are accelerating, they can take Math One, they do get Math One credit, which is high school credit, they'll be getting an academic grade. These are students that are showing high aptitude and are ready to take this. So if you'll see here, the numbers are a little bit higher, they're averaging about seventy-five percent in the benchmark pass rate average that they're doing. So they're showing, they're faring a little bit better than our high school students as we recognize all high school students are put in, they're not accelerated group coming through. So our high school here is the same data, again, we show on each school site and where students are faring on that first benchmark assessment. Again, percentages are based off of the CAPS test as well. And so they're looking in that range right now is nearly meeting for many students. There's a lot of work there that we need to do and continue to focus on those priority standards, but wanted to share that information with you as well. Next, Math One Grades Distribution. We wanted to show that, and why we wanted to show that is this is not something that's been a practice in our district in the sense of getting consistency in how we grade. When I say that, there's still some autonomy within the grade weights. But what the benchmark stands for and the weight of that benchmark is consistent across the district. With the weight of the tests are consistent, the weight of the classwork is consistent across the board. Why is this important? Because it isn't, it's vital that a C at one school is also a C at another school. Or if it's an A at one school, that we have consistency. It's hard to have real clear conversations and really show growth and change if we don't have consistency in our assessments, but also consistency in our grading. We want to communicate to parents, student success and acknowledge when they're doing well. And if there's areas of improvements, parents need to know that so that they have that time to work with their student and we can be working with their student to improve. So we are continuing to monitor this, we will keep bringing this to, to the Board each quarter. Again, just to be transparent and have, keep having that conversation. I will tell you this, our teachers are doing a lot of, a lot of great work in this area. It's a huge shift to really standardize and really focus as a district, very proud of them and the work that they're doing. Last but not least, which is not one of our main initiatives, but something we have invested in, which is paper tutoring. And I wanted to share with you guys that for this first quarter in twenty-three, we had about thirty-nine hundred engagements. Last year, we had about thirty-six hundred during this time, about a six percent growth. One thing that we are seeing is about three hundred percent more students are utilizing the writing portion where they're writing. And then they are actually getting some feedback from paper, so really excited about that. We've got a lot of buzz going with papers coming up. They've come out and they're working with principals on getting more clarity on what that looks like and how to get that out onto their campuses. So I'm excited to see that work improve. Last but not least, in the tutoring sessions, about sixty-five percent of the students' questions are math. So just, just a food for thought of things that we do see in this. So just some continuous improvement steps, I'm not going length on this as Mrs. Phillips shared a lot with Math One. We are constantly doing a continuous improvement cycle there. We're going to continue that every six weeks, bringing teams in, looking at that data as a whole Math One team. Something that was amazing today is they looked at learning progressions. They went all the way from kindergarten all the way up to Math One to see how those progressions came up. That's exciting and great work because it's important to see what are the students learning down at the younger ages? So there's consistency and you're not teaching separate things in different places. So just powerful work. In reading with a focus on phonics, as she shared, just getting a lot of feedback as getting out into the field, having conversations and really seeing students thrive in that, having a subcommittee of teachers from sites, talking to us, sharing with us what's working, what's not working, so we can continue to adjust. Finally, as I shared, we're committed to coaching and training between departments and with site leaders. You know, and so that's why we will continue to have our ASLs going out and doing site visits while we've invested in UVA. And we're committed to the leadership development and growth of our teach, of our principals and our leadership staff. Last but not least, and I just wanted to mention it, mention this, is our commitment to professional learning communities. All this is glued together by teachers getting the ability every week to come together, to look at student data, to really target in on best practices and then being able to come up with a plan to execute. And that really, to me, is the engine that drives a lot of our work and is going to continue to improve our practices. And just really proud of the work that teachers are doing and site admin are doing in that to move that forward. And also with our union partnering, our unions, our union partnering with us to do that work. So thank you. Now I'm going to hand it over to Eric Kerr.
Good evening. A couple of things for Operations Division, but I did want to share one thing. So this picture up here, I wanted to highlight our transportation team. So it might not look like a lot right there, but I will tell you that is some bus evacuation training that the department did a couple of weeks ago. The neat thing about that is, is this is the first year that they have actually done it, just not in the classroom. This time, they did it actually out on the bus. And if you see the one, there's, there is a employee standing on the roof of the bus right there. He actually went out the top hatch. And over here, they're actually, they've actually got a person in the cover that covers up the wheelchair lift. And they're actually going to take them down and they manually lower him down. So that was some really, really good training that they did that was hands-on, and I think our team really loved it. So just wanted to highlight that a little bit. Next here on Facilities, just three really, really great projects that we're proud of. Mount Whitney Gym, you were all there for the state of the district. That gym really looks good, you know, and I'm really proud to say that we have four high school gyms that we can be really, really proud of. They all have air conditioning now, which they didn't have previously. You know, they're all, we can be proud of all former gyms. So we're, that's a really great accomplishment, I think, for our team. Washington, Washington Modernization has been completed. We, we saw a lot of that when we went to First Five Friday, Hi-Fi Friday, a couple of weeks ago. And then La Jolla Science is, modernization is, is well underway, it's just actually wrapping up right now. In terms of some of our metrics, you know, we've got projects, I think the, the big message there is the facilities. We've got projects, we're really not slowing down. We've got projects we've completed, we've got projects in progress. We've got nine projects in design, and that really is not going to slow down. We've still got some Measure A projects, Safety and Security, as well as some other projects. And then we are also working on our long-range facility master plan. So lots of, lots of work in facilities in the, over the next couple of years for sure. Nutritional Services, the big message there is, is we continue to increase the number of students that are taking advantage of the no-cost breakfast and lunch that we offer every day. And another shout out to our Nutritional Services Team, they, they've, they've kind of come alongside the Superintendent's Advisory Committee. And so we're now participating in that with students to get their, their, kind of their thoughts on what we can do better in nutritional services and, and kind of helping them to explain the USDA requirements that we have and why they can't just have Domino's Pizza and Big Macs. So we're working on that with them, so that's been really cool. In term, oops, went too far. Transportation, the big message there is on time, continues to improve. But really, we're in the middle of our TransFinder implementation. Special Ed, all of the Special Ed routes will go live on November first. I actually rode the bus the other day and tested it. It's really cool, the bus pulls up to the stop and the kid's picture pops up on the tablet. And they, the bus driver taps the kid and says, the kid's on the bus. They sit down, when they get off the bus at their school, there's a whole, there's a whole picture of them on the tablet. They just, they send them all off the bus. And so we've got that, and that is working with the Stop Finder app for the parents. And so Special Ed will be a hundred percent live on November first. And we are also working on the Gen Ed, and we'll bring those on school by school in the next few weeks. Maintenance, again, you can see their work order, the number of open work orders is really decreasing. So maintenance is starting to get caught up, as is custodial and grounds. Their work will slow down a little bit and they will transition to kind of field maintenance for the winter as the turf kind of dies back. So their work will change, but it will not stop for sure. And then again, our Continuous Improvement Operations Division, we, we follow a continuous improvement model as well. And so you see their TransFinder implementation, that is really kind of all encompassing our Transportation Department's work. Nutritional Services, Regina is doing some work with her team on kind of realigning her management team, getting some more efficiencies there and doing some leadership training and some professional development. And then, and just like many of the other divisions, my, my counterparts, recruiting and retaining professionally trained staff is, is really a highlight for us. And then our Long Range Facility Master Plan, which continues to go on in the, in the background. We had a nice meeting the other day with Executive Cabinet and our, and our team, kind of going over some next steps. And so we'll be bringing some of that information forward in coming meetings. So that's my report there. I think I turn it over to Mr. Pacina, right?
Thank you, Mr. Kerr. Good evening, or President, members of the Board, Superintendent Schrum. We're going to give you just some quick updates on the Superintendent's Office. And so the, this data is really for the first quarter, which is up to September thirtieth. And so our Superintendent has visited all forty-two sites within the first quarter, actually was forty-two sites in five days. So I think he maxed out all of his walking steps for the first half of the year, probably within that. And then, of course, he went back to visit sites again. And so, you know, that's always a priority there. And then there's always visits with you and other members of Executive Cabinet or himself. So the, this number again does not also total into it. Evening events, weekend events, those aren't a part of that, which definitely would increase. In Communications, the team continues to work on improving. And so we've done fifty-seven posts within the first quarter. A lot of that was at the beginning of the year, trying to educate parents and inform about having the best first day ever, in addition to a lot of information around strategic plan, et cetera. From that, we've, we've received an additional seven hundred and twenty-seven new followers on all of our platforms. So that's cumulative across all platforms. So whether it's Instagram, TikTok, Facebook, you know, that, that's, that's from there. We still have eighty percent of our families getting Blackboard messages, which we are definitely continuing to work on. You know, and so we, we want to make sure that, we also know that Blackboard's not the only way that we communicate with parents. So we've really been leveraging our principals and our sites. And I want to just take a moment to thank them because they've been great partners, especially with some of the messages we've been getting out as a district, like best first day ever. They really did a phenomenal job of pushing that out within their own platforms and having, give that out to their teachers. So thank you, teachers, as well for doing that. We've had a hundred and forty-five requests for translation within our Translation Department. So I guess Mora over here has been spearheading a lot of that, so he's, he's been definitely busy. And just again, to reiterate, another Superintendent mentioned this, but I want to just highlight it again. We started a new venture, which is our podcast, Vessel Unified Voices. So if you haven't subscribed to it, please do, it's on every single major podcast streaming service, I guess you would call it. And so we had two hundred and forty-seven for the first time, so just give you some, just what that looks like in the industry. We're currently sitting about on the top twenty-five percent tier for listeners, right? So, but of course, you know, the way that we do things in the Communication Department, we want to make sure that we're in the top five percent at least, the minimum. So that's nine thousand listeners, right? So encourage everybody here and everybody who's listening on, online, that we want to get to that threshold of nine thousand listeners because it's really about celebrating student voices. And so the first one was about the college application process. And we had a student counselor and a parent talk about what that experience is like. And so it's really to educate our families, but through their own perspective and through students' perspective. So the next episode actually will be out, I believe, on Thursday. And so look for that, we're going to be doing an episode on bullying and depression, right? Because that's kind of like the, the theme for this, this month. And so we had a conversation with students on really helping to educate parents about what are some signs that they might see in bullying and depression with students. And you know, being a father of a teenager myself, sometimes it's how do we make sure that we connect with them? When even though they might show that they don't want to be connected with, but in reality, they do. And so the students were really just sharing from their heart how that can be. So that's really the purpose of that podcast, so make sure that you go ahead and subscribe to that, not just for us to get to the top five percent, but it's really to educate our families, right? And we want to make sure that we do that. And last but not least, we have our outreach. And so the Superintendent talked about the advisories that we had, and so we've had those with students. And then we'll continue to have those with staff. And so those, those will be coming up in the next, in the next quarter, so you'll see that, that number rise. And so our, really our, our key takeaways for continuous improvements, really refining our advisories. The Superintendent mentioned that with the students, implementing our conversation with the Board members. So that's, again, he's, he touched on that on Spotlight. We're finding our social media calendars, so you're not seeing posts every month, every day. We're finding our social media calendars. So you're not seeing posts every month, every day. But you're seeing intentional posts throughout the month, right? And then our Vessel Unified Voices podcast. And then our strategic plan, which you'll hear from the superintendent. And with that, that concludes the presentation. If there's any questions.
Okay. So how do I find the podcast I'm searching for?
So you can go on Spotify and you can just search up Vessel Unified Voices. I believe it's even on our iHeart radio as well. So it's pretty much on everything other than I think Apple. That one's taking a few weeks to get done. But please share it out with your, with all of your friends and family. And it's just a great way to get information.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes. First of all, definitely check out the podcast. I listened to the first episode. It was amazing. It was great. Especially for any of you who have seniors in your family or folks who are graduating or applying to CSU's UCs. Great conversation. One question and request I had to Mr. De Mayo and educational services. I, I love seeing the, the vast improvement that we've made in terms of reducing our expulsions, which is amazing to see. Obviously I appreciate highlighting the suspensions. I'm wondering if we can get this aggregated data for those suspensions around, you know, whether students are special education, around race, foster students, et cetera. Just so we can be more intentional about how to reduce those suspensions for the rest of the school year and in the future. So I think that would help us as a board and as a district set a direction. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. 4.4 Focus on Human Resource Development Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Ben Dillon.
Back for more. Good evening, Board President, members of the board, Superintendent Shrum and our wonderful community. I am really excited and honored to be sharing with you and having some members of our team sharing with you about our focus on human resources development and the work that we are doing. On behalf of our staff and our students, our families, community members here in Vessel Unified. What I, I want to start with. Let me make sure this is on. There you go. One of you guys always sabotages me. So there you go. I'm going to blame Mark. So. As we, as we've endeavored to create. Intentional efforts towards improving the work that we do on behalf of the district. It's been a really good opportunity for us to. Learn from really the process the board has been going through this past year. And to glean from what you've not only been a part of and what I've been fortunate to be a part of with you. But to pull from what you've established for us. And so we've started right, most of the, the work that we do and the most of the reports that come to you, we start with these slides. And that's not just for consistency and, you know, formatting, that really is because this drives the work that we do. And so the work that you've done, the resources and the artifacts that you've created through that work. The direction you've established has then helped provide clarity and really has set. Paths for us to know, here's what is important, here's what the priorities are, and here's where we need to go. And so as, as a human resource development team, we've grappled with that. And we spent considerable time over this past year evaluating. The status of our division, how that impacts our school district at large. And then drawing from those specific things that you've outlined for us. To help guide the steps that we're taking and the decisions that we're making. What's a priority? What may be less of a priority even? So in doing so, this board has, as has been mentioned a couple nights tonight, really set conditions, right? For us then as, as the district leaders to begin creating the right conditions so that. Our school and department leaders are better equipped. With the resources, the information, the processes, the practices to help lead things for the classroom. So that our classroom folks are leading things for students and so on. Ultimately. And I think that's something we continue to come back with as a human resources development division is. We're here for kids too, right? Like just because it's our focus, a lot of times people think about like our focus is on staff and it is. But our focus is on staff on behalf of students, right? It's always about the result that happens in the classroom. So. Our student outcome data is still a measure of our success. We take that very seriously. That said, what we've been able to do is really glean. Information and some specific areas of focus based on the work that the board has done in. The commitment to student learning and the beliefs and commitments and in the ongoing work you're doing, even. Kind of drawing from some of those initial parts of strategic planning that the boards have been a part of. So you can see on the left of the screen here, these are specific statements or references to information that the board has called out. That speak to the direct work and responsibility of human resources development. On the right side, what you see is some other feedback that I pulled to represent. Information we received from doing 360 evaluation and feedback input circles at the end of last year. So this is something new. We were kind of introducing actually a number of folks, some of the folks in this room were a part of that. But we wanted to get input from those who are directly impacted by our practices, by our procedures, by our systems. And so we worked with, I've been working with a leadership coach who's served in my role in a previous life. In a very large district and it has helped me learn and grow as a, as a HRD leader. And so she independently facilitated multiple different review circles, got input, had some structured questions. Kind of open ended, folks had really great things that they shared. Part of it was based on my own evaluation. And so I wanted to get 360 feedback about me as a leader. But also a big part of it was about HRD and what we're doing as an, as a division and how we're impacting. The greater good, ultimately good, bad or indifferent, right? And we got the good, bad and the ugly and it was great. And it was great to learn from and grow from. So what you see here is that, so as a result of the feedback, both the direction you've set as a board and then the feedback we receive, we've received from staff. And individuals across our organization. What we've committed to do is to ensure that we make commitments as a division to live out. The beliefs and the commitments and the direction that you've set for us. Specifically in the frame that we have responsibility over. So. As an HRD division, we have committed. To living out our commitment to our students and our staff by. Practicing a distributive leadership approach to the work that we do, meaning that we provide the resources and the tools necessary so that those closest to the work are best equipped to make decisions about that work. That means taking a close examination at our practices. Are we enabling or empowering, right? Are we equipping or are we hindering? And, and looking at the role of our hiring managers and how we better position them. How do we help empower? Those who are closer to our valuation practices, other resources for our staff to have access to things so they don't have to wonder, do I have this? Is this available to me? The same thing goes with being committed to living out. Clarity and transparency and how we communicate in the work that we do with others. There shouldn't be this feeling that there's this, you know, veil between. What happens in HR and what's going on outside. And you know, it's the Wizard of Oz kind of thing. We're just pulling levers and pulleys back here. We want people to understand there's a reason for the work that happens. Sometimes there are policies, sometimes there's law. And things that guide the work, but that shouldn't be mysterious and it shouldn't be frustrating. It should be clear and we're continuing to work on improving that. And then finally, and I think most importantly. That we, we take a human centered approach to the work that we do. Meaning that we evaluate that we work, the work we do, not by how it impacts us as a division. But how it impacts those who are closest to the results of that work. So how does our process feel to? The hiring manager? How does our process feel to the employee? How does our process feel to the candidate or the applicant? That's what should matter most and guide the work that we do. So in doing that, then we've ensured that we're really focusing on what matters most, that we are committed to ensuring our positions are fully staffed by highly qualified employees. So that's kind of a dual nature there, right? It's not just fully staffing. But it also means that we are ensuring that we're finding the highest quality candidates and then that we are working with our other leaders and colleagues. To ensure that our staff, once we do have them, have the skills and the resources necessary to be successful and that we continue to evaluate our practices and our processes. As a division to ensure that they are effective, efficient and equitable in all that we do. So I give you kind of that high level overview because that really is what's guiding the work that we're doing. And we are truly trying to be in alignment with this board and the direction that you've given us. I'm going to ask Dr. Judy Burgess, our administrator of human resources development to come up and share a little bit with you about the journey that we're on and improving these things.
Thank you. So yes, we are on this journey. I'm going to go, I have to do it. So here we go. So, you know, as, as you all know, in our division, we have operations and systems as the behind the scenes processes of our work. And so we have multiple systems in which we have those processes. So absence reporting and management. Staff database and records, performance management, all of these things are processes and multiple systems that we have. That aren't always fully utilized. And so, you know, one of our, one of our. Our journey as we move towards that is we're really working towards efficient, equitable, streamlined and modern systems that are integrated. So some of you may be familiar with Tyler Muniz, Frontline Sportsnet, you know, Laserfish, I can name many, many more systems that we utilize. And we want to make sure those are integrated and really work towards what we've been talking about, right? To make sure that we have positive student outcomes. So I, I have this photo up here because it is an example of something that we're working towards when we think about focusing on people versus process. In support and providing support and service to others. So if some of you remember our volunteer management system, you'll remember paper applications that were scanned and sent via email. Maybe personally delivered to the district office. They came maybe individually or in groups. They came with clearance documents or maybe not, we, we kind of had them and we organized them. And so you all probably remember schools were calling and emailing, finding out if volunteers were cleared or not. As you know, everyone's getting ready for the pumpkin patch field trip and we want to make sure we're cleared, right? So, you know, we went to Raptor Volunteer Management, which now. Online application that is easy to use. We've got a step by step video. It's available in English and in Spanish. It has the clearance documents already in the application process. As it goes through, it's clearing automatically with support and review. So, so safety and security is always, you know, we want to make sure that that's still happening. And now schools can see their list of volunteers from the school without calling, without emailing with their clearance levels. So imagine at the school sites, not having a call, not having to try to find out, they know exactly who their volunteers are. They can contact them via email, phone. And so it's a much more streamlined, you know, system. And so parents are also really, really appreciative of that. And as a note, we currently have over 2,000 current volunteers in our system. So it's just, it just shows, we want to make sure we're engaging and involving parents. We want to encourage that. And this is just one more way in which we're doing that with this system. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to my esteemed colleague, Robin Herricoria.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about educator support and really to talk about that. Improvement journey. And as I thought about the improvement journey for educator support and the induction programs. I feel like we are always on an improvement journey because we are supporting. The new educators, the new teachers and administrators in our district. And to do that, we, like you saw in the board report, the quarter report, we have a large amount of new teachers and administrators. That are participating in the induction program. So every year we have to really meet the needs of the educators and the administrators that are in our program. And from year to year, that can change, their needs can change. So this year we're really focused on really listening to the voices of the new teachers and administrators and also the mentors and coaches. And really focusing on the induction meetings to really listen to the needs and providing focused professional learning during our induction meetings. So we've kind of shifted that to during that induction meeting, really looking at not only helping support them. To improve their practices as teachers and as administrators, but really also to focus on the whole educator. So this month in the induction meetings for teacher induction, we really focused on educator wellness. That was a big piece of data that we saw last year that our new teachers were asking for support and to help with mental. Health and just the wellness of an educator. And like Mr. Shrum said earlier, it is October and it is the longest month of the school year. So. This is the time we do really take that time to talk to mentors and the new teachers about that support and that educator wellness. For the administrative induction program, we, I really shifted the way that I was running the program. And having some focused support and time with just the candidates as well as the coaches. And really focusing on the goals that they've created for themselves to improve as instructional leaders at their site. And so I have time with them individually to work on the candidates. But also in both induction programs, really having focused time with the mentors and the coaches to really help them improve. As coaches in our district, the teacher induction mentors are really focused on a book study this year to improve their coaching. And mentoring and really for the administrators and the coaches in the administrator induction program. Just really focusing on their time to network and how to support new administrators in our district. And as you can see, it's the largest. Of the induction candidates that we have for administrators this year. So really giving them that time to network on how do you support a new administrator and what are those things that they need? And then last but not least, I was tasked with coordinating. The professional development calendar for the district and for certificated staff this year. So that was in coordination with all of the divisions, we have been working really collaboratively. To provide a professional learning calendar, calendar for certificated staff. It's ongoing and being updated as you know. Trainings gets canceled and we were really working on not overlapping and making sure that our certificated staff. Were able to attend all trainings that they needed to attend. And so that will be continuous as the school year goes on. It's on the website and it's updated so that certificated staff and administrators have access to that and it's live. And they can get to it by going to the website. Thank you. And now Kevin Mays.
Oh, no.
Save the best for last. But I, I am actually reporting on behalf of one of our other directors, Dr. Serena Arias. She is. Home with her new little baby, spending important quality time as she should. So at, what I want to do is share a little bit on behalf of our hiring recruitment department. So one of the things that we are really trying to be mindful of is recognizing that the workforce of today. Is looking for opportunities in different ways than they did in the past. They're using different tools, they're looking for different things. They're interested in different things that we may advertise or offer. And so it's, it's really forced us to reimagine recruitment. And think about how do we do things in 2023 that we didn't do before. And use platforms and resources and, and venues that we, we weren't aware of before, we didn't have access to. There's, you know, there's. A lot of tradition in education as an institution. And so this has been a really good practice in innovation for us. To identify, okay, what do you, should we do differently? And what do we need to do differently? So just for some simple examples. In terms of reimagining recruitment, one of the things that we've really been mindful of is recognizing that. For, I mentioned to you earlier, classified staff recruitment is a challenge statewide. We hear about teacher shortage pieces as well, which we know nationally is a huge issue. We are very fortunate in that. We, we are doing better than most in our, in our teacher and certificated staff recruitment. It's still challenging and there's always, you know, things that are presented to us. But we're fortunate that we're not necessarily experiencing what some other areas are. However. We are experiencing similar challenges in recruiting in specific hard to fill classified positions. And so some of the things we've been doing have been looking at what are other pathways? And resources where and how we can market and recruit. In order to better meet folks where they're at. And not force them to step into our system to get access in our organization, meaning that. Most folks who are looking for some type of position, maybe in, you know, Mr. Care's division or. In our, in our business services division. Edjoin is not a common job platform that they're familiar with. That's not a normal thing out there to most. To most organizations, most areas of industry outside of educators. So if you're not a career educator, you're not maybe even aware of Edjoin. So we've been recognizing, okay, we have to market differently. We have to get into other areas and get online in different spaces. The other thing that we've acknowledged is that we need to start getting out more into the community. And meeting people where they are and where they go. So we've had some great partnerships with workforce investment board and others. Working with our community partners who help guide, you know, labor across our county. And leveraging those partnerships to go and be a part of what they're doing and not just have folks come and have to meet us where we're at. So doing some things differently has, has forced us to, to, you know, take. Risks and chances, but I think it's all really been exciting and we continue to see some steps going forward in that direction. The other thing that we're working on is reducing inefficiencies in the hiring. So Dr. Burgess talked. So Dr. Burgess talked about some of those technical system pieces. One of the other things that we've been doing is really taking a close look and analyzing the current workflow and process that our division staff or the department staff in hiring and recruitment, um, how they're organized and who's responsible for what. And so we've learned from other organizations, we've reached out, we've saw input. There's been a lot of self-reflection and analysis. So actually I'm excited to show that this week we are piloting a new reorganization of workflow within our technicians for hiring and recruitment, um, to help give them greater focus in areas. Try to give them an opportunity to go deeper and not have to be managing multiple things that they're bouncing back and forth from, which often is where things fall flat or mistakes are made. So we're continuing to improve that. And then finally, by redesigning our processes and our practices as a whole and continuing, as Dr. Burgess mentioned, uh, to bring ourselves forward into a current, modern, technologically more innovative place where we are still keeping people as the focus, but we're doing so far more efficiently. And that's the goal. So at this time, I'd like to ask up Mr. Kevin Mays, who is the director of our personal support services department.
Thank you, Ben. So the first, uh, topic I kind of want to touch on, and looking back to some of the data that was reported earlier tonight by Mr. Dylan, was that we have some success in our substitute fill rates, which we are certainly excited about. But along with that, we want to ensure that we are providing our subs with the most beneficial support and understanding what it is that they need as they kind of enter these classrooms and provide a pivotal role in the student outcome. So, um, we've challenged ourselves to get out of the office, get in the spaces and kind of look at these folks in action to really understand how we do our onboarding, how we provide clarity and expectation around the work that they do. Risk management, um, in its best form is done in a proactive manner. So as we kind of consider how that impacts us as an employer, it's important to understand that if we can be proactive rather than reactive, we are limiting our exposure and downtime across the district for both our students and staff members. So as we kind of take the next few weeks, um, we are going to start our relief inspections, which is an emphasis on property and liability inspections. And this will be done throughout the district with a focus on hazard assessment, identifying where we might have potential exposures and how we can mitigate those exposures. Um, in our workers' compensation program, again, kind of piggybacking on the data that you've seen earlier, while we see a trend downward in our, um, claims at this time and kind of the, the days lost, if you would, it's important to continue building our return to work program with our existing, um, employees that are out on injuries with our site leaders to be creative in a manner that gets them back in a limited capacity. It's important to do that for the employees, uh, facilitation of their injury, stability about monetary and fiscal, um, concerns. So anytime that we can get them back in an expedited manner, it's very, very important to do that. And it limits the exposure on the compensation side for us as an employer as a whole. And then lastly, um, and, and maybe perhaps most importantly, anytime that we can have an emphasis on employee benefits or a benefit program, it promotes a healthy and safe workplace for our employees. They feel confident coming to work. They feel that they can be successful and they feel taken care of. So, uh, one thing I would be behoove enough, if I didn't mention this, is that we are actually getting back to a sense of normal, uh, normalcy following our pandemic. And we're excited to announce that we have our first health and wellness clinic since prior to, um, on October 30th. So I'd encourage everybody to come out. This is for all employees, all insured dependents and retirees. So again, please promote this. We would love to see you out there and we expect it to be a good turnout. So, thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, uh, we'd be happy to take any questions or filter any comments that you may have.
Board questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Dylan.
No problem. Those are the best questions.
Five, general public comment. General public comment on any school-related topic may be heard at this time. The board asks that any public comment on an item listed on tonight's agenda be addressed at the time the item comes up for discussion by the board. To comply with the Brown Act Californian's Open Meeting Law, board discussion is limited to items on the gender, agenda. Therefore, when receiving public comment for items not on the agenda, the board's role is limited to receiving such comments and the board may not engage in dialogue with the public. The board thanks the public for its participation in public comment and the understanding of the board's responsibility. Pursuant to board policy, the board will limit individual comments to no more than three minutes, individual topics to 20 minutes. It is recommended you begin your comments by stating your name. So our first public comment is Jaclyn Hurtah.
Good evening, Madam President, Superintendent Schrum and members of the board. My name is Jaclyn Hurtah. I am here today on behalf of the students who are currently enrolled in our ethnic studies program offered at the College of Sequoias. I am a former graduate from Redwood High School that is part of the Visalia Unified School District. The ethnic studies program includes Black American Studies, American Indian Studies, Chicano and Chicana Studies, Asian American Studies, and Introduction to Ethnic and Social Justice Studies. As the words of my professor, Octavio Barajas, these courses are intended to study different ethnic communities and cultures in U.S. society. The study, they study the contribution and conflicts in the U.S. society by using an interdisciplinary approach such as public health, history, sociology, literature, art and music. It provides an introductory survey of major past and current topics that are integral to ethnic, to the ethnic community. It brings the voices and experiences of these cultural groups to the center of attention to better understand and appreciate triumphs and resiliency over adversity from the ethnic perspective. As a student enrolled in this class, specifically Chicano and Chicana Studies, I have learned to understand and appreciate the history of my culture and its related issues. Prior to this curriculum, I was unaware of the importance of ethnic studies and the roots of where many people, including myself, came from. I hope the future generations to come can have the exposure to ethnic studies at an early age rather than later in their life. Because learning many cultural backgrounds is vital to one's education and critical understanding. In saying this, I want to thank the board for the implementation of ethnic studies in the Visalia Unified School District. Thank you.
Thank you. Roberto Reyes, who knows?
Good evening, board. Good evening, board of directors. My name is Roberto Reyes. I'm here with my peers representing the support for ethnic studies in the Visalia Unified School District as well as Lindsay Unified School District, to which I am an alumni. While taking ethnic studies course for my college's Quay's Business Path, my course exposed me to the hard work and challenges of Mexican-Americans. It showed me the sacrifices that came with my education and the people who are behind it, such as Cesar Chavez, Rudufio Corky Gonzalez and Dolores Hurtah. I believe that these courses of African-American, Asian-American, Native American and Mexican-American studies should be implemented and taught in all counties. Not only because it'll teach students about the struggles of minorities, these courses can also give students another reason to be proud of their culture by explaining in detail how these minorities helped build this country. With the implementation of ethnic studies requirements in the Visalia Unified School District starting in 2023, I am grateful to the board for the hard work and commitment. It gives me another reason to be grateful in our American educational system. Thank you.
Thank you. Diego San Luis Ortega.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Sorry if, uh, wasn't nervous having us in a while. Uh, I'm used to it, but not too much. So I'll just go ahead and start. As we heard from the two previous students who went before me, their experiences are the reason why ethnic studies is important to the educational journey of the USC students. As someone who is a former VSD student, this matters to me immensely. Why does this matter? As someone who aspires to be a future, future educator for VUSD and as well as an ethnic studies major, I want to make sure all students have access to these classes to help them find their calling and help them along with their educational journey, just as these courses have helped me find my calling and that calling has to be, be the first ethnic studies, BUSD, um, educator. Hopefully, uh, right here in the same district that educated me as well. So thank you to the board members who have worked to help grow ethnic studies. Your work, your work to help students grow and develop has been an impact. Every student who has had the opportunity to take the ethnic studies courses. Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal Reynolds.
Good evening. On October 2nd, I received confirmation that 13 out of 19 books originally submitted for review and challenged during our July 25th meeting have all been voted in favor of retainment in our school libraries. This decision is disappointing to many in the community, many in the community that are very concerned with the sexually explicit content in these books, books that continue to be freely accessible to minors in both VUSD middle schools and high schools. I'd like to take a moment to discuss some of the concerns I had about the current challenge policies. Policy 6163.1 A and B number five, in particular states that committee proceedings shall remain confidential. Only recommendations are to be reported to the superintendent or designee. As challenger thus far, and from my view, your current policy allows only for that of a very internal and a non-transparent process. There has been absolutely no ability for myself or the public to view or witness any processes, recordings and/or minutes to be assured that a fair process was in fact conducted. How do we know that seven member committees were actually set up for all 13 books? How do we know that 13 books and excerpts were fully examined at all? How do we know what instructions were given to said committee members as far as how to review and how to determine a final vote? How does that information, if given at all, potentially influence voting outcome? How do we really know that the majority vote for each committee was that to retain all 13 books? The designee's ability to appoint committee members in general does not allow for public input or participation. Of greater concern in regards to committee selection is policy 6163.1, section C, number three, which requires the designee to include the following members. District library personnel, district administrative staff, school site administrators and faculty members. This policy stacks your seven member committees with the majority of four VUSD staff members per committee from the very start. How is the community supposed to be assured that if your process was in fact conducted when the policy calls for a majority of VUSD staff from the very beginning? Policy 6163.1B, letter G, states that when challenge material is reviewed by the district, it shall not be subject to further reconsideration for 12 months. So should an appeal take place and a decision is made to remove these books? To be fair, there is nothing indicative on the challenge of a challenger appeal process for anyone that may disagree with the decision. It's concerning that the policy does not include any participation from that of our elected school board members. The policy leaves challengers and concerned citizens without the ability to participate, without representation and with a tremendous lack of transparency. As far as the Sunkus's report this, that VUSD spent 14,000 on this review, I would suggest that the board amend your policy, which requires an abundance of VUSD staff participation. This likely resulted in an excess of overtime pay when money could have been saved. Salary staff could have participated, volunteer community members. All books are free and readily available on Sora, eBooks, YouTube and public and school libraries. Zoom meetings could have been conducted for free and with community with transparency. It's unreasonable to place blame at the cost of the district anywhere else but the policy itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Warthin, I hope I said that right.
I've worked, uh, thank you for this opportunity. I want to read one of those excerpts from the book that Crystal was talking about to see what our children are exposed to. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Is that better? Don't do this, Henry. Naomi's lip trembled as she spoke. Down, he ordered. She dropped to her knees. The clouds cleared and the tears shone on her face. Beto wanted to run to her, but he couldn't. Lie back, open your legs and stop crying. Don't tell me this is the first time you've done this. Henry, she protested. I haven't. I never. You lied enough already. And then he pushed her back until her head was on the ground. Beto, you come here and watch, but don't try anything. I've got the gun right here. Beto looked long enough to see that the revolver his father held in his, near his sister's face. The shotgun lay on the far side of Naomi out of reach. Beto did not want to watch, but he heard wash his shouts. The sound of him pulling at the ropes, Henry's fist slamming into his sister's face once, twice, three times. Henry shouting, you like that? Keep it up, boy. Every time you holler, I'm gonna punch her again. Wash the silence. The rustle of the dry leaves, his father's rapid breathing and agonizing awaiting. His sister crying out in pain and then the end of it. Henry shudder, grunt and grasp, Naomi sobbing. Beto. Henry was standing up, zipping his pants in one hand. He said, I'll be damned, girl. Pushing his hair back out of his face. You were telling the truth. This is what's in the libraries at the high school. And I would like to read, you know, there's been other states that have done studies and have determined that allowing kids to this pornography and this, this filth and this explicit content is put students at a higher risk of anxiety, depression, isolation, sexual assault and suicide. I've heard many things from all the presenters today that, uh, you're here as advocates for the children. It seems like you're doing a good job of that. I would ask that you would do as Crystal asks and, and change your policy and get rid of these books. We're not asking you to ban books. Just take them from the school libraries. They can, they'd be available in public libraries, but they shouldn't be in the schools. And our children shouldn't have access to this. Thank you.
Cassie Peterson.
Hello, my name is Cassie Peterson and I'm a concerned parent and resident. I'm here today asking that sexually explicit and vulgar books not be available in our public schools where parents are diminished control of what our children can access and read. Books are good tools for parents to help teach their children how to behave. Sadly, the shift in books in schools these days have gotten very sexual, graphic and vulgar content. The majority of parents in this community have no idea how bad it has gotten. When students receive exposure to graphic materials, then there are be adverse psychological effects that occur afterwards. The Apparican Academy of Patriotic Support that children who receive exposure to violence in books at an early age can encourage them to act aggressively and to sensitize them to violence. Numerous studies on the use of graphic material by students indicate negative psychological effects, including more casual sex partners and beginning to have sex at a younger age. This is not a matter of sheltering our children. It's a matter of guiding them towards what is best. We are the adults and it's our job to protect them, no matter how unpopular that may seem. Removing certain books from the library is about showing discretion and respecting our community's values. As parents, we must be vigilant about what our children are exposed to in their education. And it's our responsibility to ensure that they have age-appropriate reading material protecting their hearts, their minds and their innocence. In this book, The Late Night at the Telegraph Club, written by Melinda Lowe, there are two inappropriate inserts on page 42 and 287. This book is in seven schools here in the district and one being a middle school. Reading these inappropriate books, the inappropriate inserts are imprinted in your mind. You might not remember the plot or the story, but these images are not easily forgotten. And I'll just read a short one real fast. So she went to bed imagining Maxine's hand on the buttons of her Patricia's blouse. Unbuttoning it, she slid her own hand beneath her packet, her, in her nightgown. She felt her own warm skin beneath her fingertips. In the quiet darkness of her bedroom, she felt the faint but insisting beating of her heart and she felt it quickening. She imagined the blouse sliding off Patricia's shoulders and the pale swell of her breasts. Lily's whole body went hot and she felt the need to cross her legs against the hungry ache at the center of her body. She imagined them kissing the way Marlin and Bardo had kissed Mary Murphy in the Wild One, which she and Shirley had snuck into last February. "Don't be such a square," Shirley had said when Lily had worried about getting caught. But now it's Lily's imagination. Marlin Brando became Max, crushing Patricia's boneless Lee in her arms and then their lips pressed together and Lily tugged up in the hem of her nightgown.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Bruce Kinderbro, did I say that correctly? Say again?
Kinderberg.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, Kingsbury. Okay.
Yeah, and so I'm a grandfather of eight grandchildren in the area, and so I consider this a very important subject to discuss about the reading materials available for the children. This particular book is called John, by John Green, Looking for Alaska, and it's recommended for age fourteen and older. Some of the, and some of the questions that I have about this book is at what age is pornography, pornography legal and acceptable in today's age, today's time? Is there an age-appropriate rating for books as there used to be for video movies? Is there an appropriate age? And if fourteen is an age that this kind of reading can be taken, I'm going to read a couple of excerpts from, from the book. "I spent the afternoon with Laura. We were very cutesy, even though we didn't know the first thing about each other and barely, barely talked." This is a foreign girl who didn't know English very well. "We walked to the TV room where I locked the door. We were watching The Brady Bunch, an all-American movie. But while they were watching that, that movie, Laura randomly asked me, 'Have you ever gotten a blowjob?' And I'm gonna skip the next part for interest of time." "What made you think of that?" he asked. "I've just never given one," she answered, her little voice dripping with seductiveness. "Sexy, all of a sudden, but to hear her sweet little Romanian voice go, 'No,' I said, 'I never have. Thank, I, I think it would be fun.'" And going on to the next, on page one-twenty-seven, "My pants are pulled down, boxers down, little..." Laura unbuttoned my pants, pulled them down, and pulled out my penis. And skip the next section, and there she wrapped her hand around it and put it in her mouth. And this is for fourteen-year-olds and older. "With my penis in her mouth, I sat there waiting. What comes next? Should I do something?" I'm gonna skip to the last one here, which is a different setting and where these two teenagers were watching a video movie. And I sat, already look, okay, I'm not even gonna read this one because I don't have time, but you got the idea what this book is about, and I think we should all be considering what's in these books. Thank you.
Thank you. David Richardson.
Hello, can you hear me? I'm David Richardson. I'm a Gideon from the Gideon, Gideon's International in Nashville, Tennessee, and we passed out about thirty-five hundred bibles this, this school year so far. So we're, we're getting about thirteen hundred bibles a month. So, and then this Bible here has God's Help in Crisis. There's about a hundred and twenty verses that they can look up to kids, and they've been pretty receptive. I'd say forty, forty percent to about fifty-five percent of the kids are receptive at all these schools. Some more, some less. The vestiduro, not so much. I don't know why, but they didn't want any bibles, aren't they? But I don't know. Anyway, I've been in Bible clubs at Crowley, a long time ago, Crowley, and at Pinkham with my son. He was a drug baby, and he was, he wasn't abused, but he was picked on, and he was, you know, he had problems. And I was at about six roundtables with Andy here. He was the principal and the psychologist, oh, the psychologist, I'm sorry, I don't know. Can you guys hear me? Okay. The psychologist would always say, "Well, how's he doing?" And they would say, "Well, he's not medicated. Well, I didn't medicate him. I just let him do karate, and I let him do salmon pills." We went and got pills up in, by the mountains, some doctor with natural medication. So those schools were fine, but then he got into a little bit of trouble. He had a knife, and he got in some trouble, so he, we got him into the military school. And he was doing pretty good, and then they, they got me. I was doing, going to the meetings, and they let me be the, the school rep. So then we got started, and we started a Bible club, and we were passing off a whole bunch of them in the school. And so we had a Bible club, like ninety-one kids were going there before the COVID, so it was two years ago. But he did real good. He became a naval SEAL, and he was the president of the Bible club. So there is, you know, there's good stuff going on too. But I don't know if you guys have a, a military school, maybe you can, you know, think about that. That would be nice, and get Bible clubs for kids. The parents need to know how to do it. And so I would say...
Thank you.
Okay, I got his little, I gotta read him his little, little verse, his life verse.
I'm sorry, we have, we're running out of time.
I can't read it?
No, sorry. Thank you. Terry Hagopian, did I say that right? If it's Armenian, I shouldn't know how to say it, but...
Listening to us this evening, my name is T. Hagobian. I have some reading material that obviously you've seen a lot of people going through and going apart, going, bringing to your attention. I got a third way through this book, and I ran out of post-it notes. It was very, very bad. This was geared for a fourth-grade classroom. I'm sure that that's not where it stops, but there's a whole lot of issues in here that I have in regards to, for, for instance, I was hot mad. I was very mad. I wanted to punch my dad in the face. I wanted to punch him in the nose and make him bleed. I wanted to punch him in the eye, make him blind, and I wanted to kick him in the huevos and make him pass out. I mean, this is what this kid is saying here, and he's all throughout here. He's, he's a troubled individual, and he's talking about different things and being a picked-on kid and the things that he wants to do to other people. He's talking about spending time with drunken buddies and, and going through and watching them get so drunk that they can't even stand up. He's, he's talking about being on this reservation and, and doing the gambling thing with everyone. I mean, this, the name of it is, an absolutely true diary of a part-time Christian, Indian, sorry. Then he goes on to talk about, he's got lewd speech all through here. He's saying filthy words, the F-word. He's saying all kinds of things, talking about people that he would like to just annihilate. And it says here, one of the excerpts of this page, it said, "I was fourteen. It was my first day of high school. I was happy about that, and I was almost especially happy about my first geometry class. I have to admit that isosceles or whatever, those triangles, they make me feel hormonal. Most guys, no matter what age, get excited about curves and circles, but not me. But don't get me wrong, I like girls and their curves, but I really like women and their curvier curves. I spent hours in the bathroom with a magazine that has one thousand pictures of naked movie stars, naked women, right-hand, happy, happy, joy, joy. Yep, that's right. I admit it. I masturbate. I'm proud of it, and I'm good at it, and I'm ambidextrous. And if there's a professional masturbator league, I'd get drafted number one and make millions of dollars. Maybe you're thinking, well, you really shouldn't be talking about masturbating in public. Well, tough, I'm gonna talk about it because everybody does it and everybody likes it, present company excluded. I'm sorry, I'm not one of those." Then he goes on to talk about his thumbs, and he's really glad that God gave him thumbs. Then you get over here at this other tail end of this book here, and this book talks about the F-word, and he attaches it to the N-word. Now, if I have family members that are African-American, this is absolutely appalling. It was about this guy asking him, "Hey, did you know that Indians are living proof that ends F-buffaloes? If that's not enough to remove this filth from the school, I don't know what it is. Everybody's running around saying, I claim this, I claim that. That's gotta go."
Thank you.
Please honor your positions. First, I just want to say thank you because your twenty minutes is actually up. So I appreciate the fact that you're allowing me to speak. Good evening, Board and Administrators. My name is Marilyn Malloy. Back in July, when Crystal Reynolds first brought this issue to the Board, my husband and I encouraged her that it was actually a good thing that VUSD had a policy and process for removing inappropriate books and that she should engage the process and trust that it would produce the correct result. The process has now run its course, and I am now questioning whether or not that was good advice. You've heard excerpts from some of these books here tonight, and I hope you'd agree that there is no context in which these type of explicit sexual language is appropriate for children. However, after thirteen independent book reviews, the district has curiously come to the exact same conclusion for each, that there is nothing inappropriate about these books, and they should remain available to children in VUSD libraries. I say curiously because it seems odd that not even one of them would end up with a different recommendation. And although the district has a clear process for, for review, the lack of transparency leaves concerned parents and community members with several questions. First, were the committees made up, made up of only district employees, or, or was there diverse representation from the community? Second, we know that the program director from the source was on at least two of these committees. Was the faith community properly represented as well? Third, how do we know that the community actually read the books and actually debated them? Is it possible that they just looked at a third-party recommendation and took a vote? We don't know because per district policy, committee proceedings shall remain confidential. Only the recommendations are due, are to be reported to the superintendent or designee. There are serious problems with this policy. There is no mechanism for our elected officials to get involved. The Board actually has no ability to step into the process. If a book actually is removed, there is no opportunity for that decision to be challenged. There is no transparency to the process. The public, as well as the person challenging the book or books, has to blindly trust that the right thing is being done. I would ask tonight that the Board reconsider how this policy is written and make changes that allow for Board Member intervention, increased transparency, and greater diversity within the committees. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to our, our consent agenda. Would anybody like to pull a consent agenda item? Okay, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A motion.
I'll second.
On a motion by Board Member Casper Saleno, second by Board Member Viegas, all in favor?
Student Board Representative votes yes, and motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so we have Ms. Maui Luis from Golden West. It's time for your report.
Thank you. Starting with El Diamante, El Diamante hosted their Candyland Homecoming Week, which consisted of a rally, a lunch carnival, a parade, dress-up days, lunch activities, and a football game. El Diamante held their monthly minor senate where they received student feedback on potential Battle for the Saddle dress-up days. El Diamante sent their ASB sophomore class to the Area C Conference in Hanford. At this conference, the students learned about a variety of ways to improve their home ASB schools. Lastly, El Diamante ASB is preparing for their Battle for the Saddle Week to maintain their ownership over the saddle against Golden West. Golden West had an extremely successful homecoming week filled with lots of activities, dress-up days, and a movie night showing the movie Rio. Golden West got to celebrate Breast Cancer Awareness Month with Pinkout Night against Mount Whitney for football and for volleyball. Golden West is slowly beginning to prepare lots of exciting dress-up days and decorations for Battle for the Saddle and Battle for the Paddle, where both football and girls' water polo will fight for two wins against El Diamante. Golden West just hosted their car show. It was a huge success with over two hundred cars involved. There were lots of small businesses and local food vendors in attendance, along with the great crowd of people. Mount Whitney High School held their homecoming game against Porterville and won thirty-five to twenty-eight. All of the Mount Whitney student body and staff wore gold to this game to support childhood cancer awareness. Mount Whitney Drama is preparing for their annual fall play, The Grim Spectacular, which will be held this weekend, October nineteenth through the twenty-first. Mount Whitney Band had a competition at Fresno State and placed third. And lastly, Mount Whitney is currently working on their trunk-or-treat in a haunted house that will be held on October thirtieth. Redwood had their Pinkout Game and Future Ranger Night Thursday, October twelfth. That night included the performance of Middle School Band and Color Guard, as well as Redwood Cheer Camp littles. Redwood also had middle school ASB members that were flag runners and DJs for that night. Redwood has been in preparation for Cowhide, which is coming up next week, where Redwood ASB and Ranger TV have been creating digital advertisements and videos to post throughout the week. Redwood Volleyball had their Breast Cancer Awareness Game versus Porterville. During this game, the volleyball team recognized Kathleen Condi, who is a cancer survivor. She has two grandowders on the team. Redwood Link Crew is hosting their annual Terror on Vista Haunted House on October nineteenth from seven to nine PM. There will be food and carnival games for everyone to enjoy. Sequoia graduated thirty students per quarter one, along with a food vendor and noontime activities. On Friday, the thirteenth, all of Sequoia celebrated Breast Cancer Awareness, where students and staff wore pink for the day. The day was super successful because we saw students dress up who never dressed up before. Sequoia sent six students to Cata Area C Conference, in which twenty-six hundred students from the valley attended. This was their first time to attend a leadership conference for Sequoia. Our ethnic studies classes led by Mrs. Cervantes has students, had students read on the intercom various Hispanic history topics to recognize Hispanic Heritage Month. VCIS sent their ASB leaders to the Cata Leadership Conference on October sixteenth. Students were able to attend a variety of workshops about ways to improve school spirit and culture, followed by a rally and a keynote speaker. VCIS ASB recognized Suicide Awareness Month, October second through the sixth, by having students write inspirational messages on large yellow ribbons and displaying them throughout both campuses. Hundreds of yellow ribbons were given out to all VCIS Eagles. October sixteenth through twentieth, VCIS is recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Staff is wearing matching custom pink shirts, and students are wearing pink throughout the week. VCIS hosted a booth to showcase our medical pathway opportunities at the Middle School College and Career Fair on October twelfth at Rawhide Stadium. Lastly, VTEC celebrated the Harvest Festival on Saturday, October fourteenth, and VTEC would like to thank all who came to support this event. The VTEC Harvest Festival King Diego Cruz and Queen Carmen Ortiz were awarded by a close margin over the week-long activities that took place. Our ASB team did an amazing job planning engaging activities. VTEC is working to ensure all college applications are complete, and we are hosting a college application workshop on Wednesday, October eighteenth. VTEC would also like to thank the College and Career Readiness Department for their showcase event where students were talking to potential future Wolverines. Thank you.
Thank you. Great job. Mr. Belt.
Thank you, President Gamoyen. I am on track to try to visit all the school sites, although not in five days, but over the course of this year. And one of the things that was quite striking at Golden West is I went to an OCI class and had a conversation with a student who had been in trouble, and so they're trying to get him back on track by having him in class, and he liked my shoes. And he liked my shoes. And it started a conversation about how much do they cost and where did I get them? And he asked me, what do you do on the school board? Said, well, I have two tasks mainly. I want to make sure that you have everything you need to learn and that your teacher gets paid. He goes, oh, okay, how much do you get paid? Said, we're not talking about how much I get paid, though it's far less than probably your dad. And he goes, well, he makes 700 a month, a week. Said, that's what I get a month. That's because I'm not doing this for a salary. Do this to serve. Do this to make sure that our children continue to learn well and have an environment where that can happen. So I want to thank all the principals that are here. You continually are coming out, all, almost all 40 of you. And I'm getting more and more of a glimpse of what your task is like every day. I wouldn't want to be a principal, so I applaud that you are. But I also am amazed at how much investment we are making in giving you the resources you need to learn and do your task every day and to make sure you get paid. That's our job. I enjoyed being able to flip burgers with two PhDs at the VAPA Showcase, Dr. Vegas and Dr. Odo, because that's what we do to help support the foundation in all that they're doing. I was a quasi faux mimic auctioneer for the Redwood football boosters for the second year running. I don't know if I helped them make a lot of money. I just kept the evening moving. Because that's what we do. We want to serve all of our students and organizations of VUSD. And then last but not least, the amazing event, and we went, I went to a lot of events, but the event at the Rawhide Stadium, the Career and College Tracks. I had a student teach me what I was doing wrong with recessa anni. I didn't know how to press hard enough. I thought I knew the rhythm and the strength. But they now have a new recessa anni that it clicks when you push hard enough and it lights up if you're doing the right rhythm with a green light. And that Medical Academy student schooled me. And it was one of many that were able to teach and encourage our eighth graders who were walking through thousands of them to walk through that day. So thank you for all you do. Vicki, thanks for making that happen. There's more I'd like to say, but I'll keep it short because we've had a long evening. But thank you, Mr. Thompson, that you've taught us the three questions to ask whenever we're with students. What are you doing? Why are you doing it? And how do you know if you're learning it or doing it right? And that's changed my whole approach to engaging students. Thanks.
Thank you. Board Member Vegas.
Thank you, President Gamoyen. Again, another shout out to the College and Career Department. Just seeing all the photos from that Rawhide event, just amazing. And seeing all the happy faces from all of our students across all of our schools. And of course, shout out to our facilities, our principals and all of our staff for getting our students there and back safely and, you know, without incident. I wanted to wish everybody a happy Hispanic Heritage Month, which just concluded, you know, this past weekend. And also a Filipino American History Month, which is the month of October. And I think that's appropriate, given the fact that we are here in the Central Valley and the epicenter for the farmworker labor movement in the 60s and the 30s, where Filipino farmworkers went on strike with leaders like Philip Veracruz and Larry Idling, later joined by Dolores Huarta and Cesar Chavez. And so I think it's so important that we teach that history to our students, that we teach the history of social movements of civil rights and that struggles for better wages, better dignity, better working conditions for all of our farmworking families and our students who continue, many of them farmworkers themselves, either in the summers or sometimes before or after school. And so I want to recognize that and take a moment to honor that history. And I also want to welcome and thank our school board member Maui. And I'm really glad you're here tonight. You did an excellent job on your report. And with that being said, I want to also segue into that, a recent assembly bill that was passed. This is Assembly Bill 275, was just signed into law by the governor, which is a bill all about student board member reps. And what this allows school districts to do is moving forward, allow for college, or sorry, excuse me, elective credit and/or compensation for student board members. And so I really think we have an opportunity to lead in this regard, to really show our student board members that we value the time, the efforts that they take into preparing their student board member reports, preparing for meetings, being here at the meetings, listening and participating the same way that all of us do. And so I'm looking forward to those conversations and hopefully seeing how we might potentially be able to lead as a district. Other than that, I'm looking forward to next week, reading at Highlands Literacy Nights and hopefully attending some other events as well. Really encouraging literacy, really inspired and encouraged by all the work we're doing in terms of phonics and language development. And so I'm looking forward to that. Really happy that we highlighted some of our students and the work they're doing on voter education and participation. We also have Voter Registration Week in the state of California in April. So I'm looking forward to seeing, you know, what we could potentially do to increase that engagement and participation in the future as well. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Casper Salena.
It's late and so I'll keep it very brief. I don't, I, I even forgot that I did that event, Mr. Schram, until I saw the picture of me there. So it's been a long month. One thing about doing these meetings once a month is there's so much jam packed in those four weeks that I even forget. So on that note, I just always enjoy getting out in this community, even when it's not of VUSD events. And so one of the things my family and I have really been enjoying lately is going to the farmer's market that has moved to the courthouse on Saturday mornings. And if you haven't been, I really suggest you go and check it out. They do accept EBT cards for those who are, get their funding for their groceries through that. And it's just, it's just a great time. There's, there's vendors out there, the farmers that are there are great and kids love it. So if you're around on a Saturday morning, check it out.
Thank you. Board Member Odo.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief. Just thank you to principals and staffs at three school sites that had the opportunity to visit in the last month. Great visits all the way around, Riverway Elementary, Hurley Elementary and Green Acres Middle School. Green Acres added the additional entertainment and informational value of a lockdown while we were there. And I think Board President Gamoyen might comment on that. But great visits and good to see kids and teachers working hard on getting smarter. Attended Board Policy Meetings and also stated the district event way back last month. And also, as Mr. Belt noted, cooked hamburgers at the Ed Foundation Band Showcase. Great event there, well attended. And my favorite thing of the year has always been to be the head barbecianer for that. It's been said a couple of times tonight and it's very, very true. We're in the middle of the long month, in the middle of a long semester. And that underscores the fact that the middle part of any endeavor is always the toughest. You're past the hubris of the opening of anything and you get to the part where you know what to do or kids know what to do, teachers know what to do and you're doing it, you're comfortable, things are in a routine. And that's when fatigue kind of sets in. So this is a hard time to maintain what I used to call the even strain of making sure that you get through what you need to get through. So thanks to everyone involved in making sure that kids are focused on learning throughout this time here. It's also important to note that in the reports that we saw tonight, we're also in the middle of a lot of initiatives that are going on. And again, the middle is the hard part. Once you've established where you want to go, it's the doing of it that leads to the celebration at the end that is the most onerous part of any endeavor. So thanks again to everyone for undertaking the middle part of the very, very long reaching strategic and operational and even the tactical things that are going on in the school district. So thanks to all for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Neeler.
Trying to keep mine short also. I want to just give a thanks to the principals and staff also at several schools. I have every other Friday off, so I try to fill that up with visits and visited Coneyard, Golden Oak and Four Creeks, and it was great to see them. And on my Fridays, I love the fact that when I do go in there, you see students engaged, focused and on reading and it's not, they're fun activities. And it's just nice to see that we're really focusing on the reading and the math. I did want to give a shout out to Viva Blunt. They had a family literacy night that Gamoyen and I attended. It was amazing. There were so many parents, students involved, activity, learning centers. The whole theme was pirates. All the teachers were dressed up. They did a read aloud from a book. The kids were amazing and I just, I love literacy nights. So thank you so much. And then one more thing, the ELOP, I did go, actually, Gamoyen, I also went to that one. The Denton Performance of Aladdin. And that was through our ELOP. And I am amazed at how many students were participating, which tells me that we have a lot of kids that are signing up for that program and it is an amazing program. So thank you for bringing that to our students because it's after school and it keeps our students connected.
Thank you. Board Member Gaby.
So yes, definitely echo all of the thanks to our staff and welcoming us onto their sites and into their classrooms to see student learning. Also, on the College and Career Ready, just wanted also kind of shout out to like Paige Loverden and her team. I have a student that's a senior right now. We're applying to colleges and I say we because it's a group process and it is no joke. And to the high schools, you know, they're constantly putting on different workshops for how, you know, UC applications, CSU applications. And our high school teachers, I know you're being asked to write, in addition to everything else, you're writing letters of recommendations and, and our learning directors are and counselors. So thank you. Those are all those little extra things that our staff puts in to our students that just makes such a huge difference. And as a, as a school board member, but as a parent too, very appreciative. And lastly, next Wednesday, we have the Excellence in Education Awards. And I know we have some employees that are being honored. And I'm suddenly unsure if they know yet, so I'm going to stop there and say congratulations. And I'm sure we'll talk about it next time.
I want to thank principals also for being so welcoming on, on, you know, inviting us. Well, we kind of invite ourselves to your campus and you let us come and see. And it's just fun to see all that teaching and learning. I will elaborate a little bit on the Raptor lockdown. That was amazing. So we're in the office and it went off. And then what I loved the best, the best part for me was Principal Corliss said, okay, I'm going out, the rest of staff, you don't have to go out. I have to make sure all kids are in. And the whole staff says, no, we're going out. We got to make sure our kids are safe. I mean, that almost made me cry. This morning, Superintendent Schram and I got to visit our Mountain View School, our dual immersion with our Assemblyman Vince Fong. And we got to show that off. And Principal SeFuentes, if you need someone else on your PR team, that's the lady. She really showed him all the wonderful things that are happening. I also got to see Board Member Casper Saleno's daughter singing in Spanish and English. That's an amazing program. We, I also, something that wasn't mentioned was I went to the, there was a 40 year, I don't know why 40, maybe, maybe I'll be dead by 50, I don't know. But a 40 year water polo celebration about bringing water polo, Frank Bell bringing water polo to our district. And so we, I got to watch Redwood and Golden West. So that was good and it kind of went back and forth who won. I also want to thank Jim Billingsley and Claudia Ardon's. Those videos you made about our data were amazing. And I hope all parents watch it because it tells you what you can do as a parent. Parents need to be involved in their kids' education. They need to know what their kids are learning. And they need to support the teachers in their learning. So I just want to thank you. Those two videos were amazing. So that's my report. Superintendent Schram.
Thank you, Board, President Gamoyen. Just want to give a shout out again, as Dr. Odo talked about October. And so one of the things we wanted to do as a district team is just give a little token of appreciation to our teachers, our teachers and our paraprofessionals, our school based staff that work directly with students every day. And so starting this week and continuing to next week, each cabinet member, myself included, and their teams have signed up and taken a school or two. And over the course of the mornings are going to be bringing coffee and donuts to that staff. We get there about 30 minutes before school starts. The day before, the principal lets the staff know, hey, we're going to be there. And we're just doing, you know, handing out donuts and coffee and just simply saying to our teachers and our staff that work directly with students every day, thank you for what you do. And I hope that puts a smile on our staff's face and let them know how much we appreciate the work that they do. And, and we're going to get through October and into November. And as you heard from the reports tonight, and I know we had a lot to share, but that's because there's a lot of important work going on. At the end of the day, as you see our vision and mission, our job is to make sure every student is learning every day. And we know that our data doesn't support right now that that's happening for every student every day. And that's why we are engaged in this work. It's the right work and it's important. And it is something that's going to help make sure that vision and mission become a reality. It is a journey to get there. And I appreciate our leaders and our teachers and our staff for embracing this new work and going on this journey together because again, we're here to make sure every kid learns every day. And our data will indicate whether or not we're being successful. And until that's 100%, we have work to do. And so I'm excited about that work and that's why I'm here. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. We'll have to show up at the Donuts Board, Board Members. Okay, 10.1 Recommended Expulsions. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Second.
On a motion by Casper Saleno and Board Member Casper Saleno and Board Member Odo, all in favor.
Student Board Representative abstains and motion passes unanimously.
10.2 Recommended reinstatements. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Second.
On a, on a motion by Board Members Casper Saleno, second by Board Member Neeler, all in favor. Uh-oh. I vote yes. How come that's not working?
There goes. Student Board Representative abstains and motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and 10.3 Recommended Review Continued Expulsions.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
On a board, on a motion by Board Member Casper Saleno, second by Board Member Odo, Odo, all in favor.
Student Board Representative abstains and motion passes unanimously.
Okay, here comes the best part of our board meeting. 11.1 Visel Unified District Strategic Plan First Read. Superintendent Schram.
All right, well, thank you, President Gamoyen, Board Members, Community Staff for that buildup. We are excited to share the first read of our strategic plan. And we know going back to two years ago, we heard our community, we heard our district talk about the need for us developing a strategic vision. And so we didn't engage in this work right away. We were very deliberate about taking some time with the Board and with our community and staff to first identify our foundation. Because how can you build a strategic plan if you don't know your base, right? Where you're building from, where you're starting, what your goals and aspirations are. And so I'll just reorient our team back to this foundation slide. And over the journey of almost two years now, our Board engaging in developing what we believe and we're committed to doing, our commitment for student learning, also known as our theory of action, developing our mission, our mission, I just created a new word there, our mission and vision. Maybe that's, maybe I'm on to something there. And then how that will lead to a strategic plan, which will actually be the working plan to make those things become reality. And so as we share tonight, we're going to share our first read of our strategic plan overview, the themes and focus areas. Because again, our job is to create the conditions for our school sites and our students to be successful. You've seen this slide before. We talked about this is why we needed a strategic plan to unify all of the great work that was happening in our district, but oftentimes in isolation or maybe even in competition with one another. And so how do we scale that to make sure it's impacting all 30,000 students? And so we began this work back in February. We engaged in stakeholder workshops, data reviews, we had focus groups, surveys, and then going through the summer, board workshops, working to really develop what it is we want to see out of a strategic plan. And now here we are in October, presenting this to the Board. And I want to take a moment to highlight this slide. This is really important. Our listening sessions covered every school. Our listening sessions covered every school. Our team went out and engaged in thought exchange with all staff who chose to attend the session back in the spring. We went to the community. We had both online surveys and in-person opportunities. We captured over 1,700 participants, over 10,000 thoughts in our thought exchange. Of that 138,000 ratings, that means people took the time to go through and indicate what they thought about the different comments. Over 1,800 teachers classified students, completed surveys, well, participated in the listening sessions. Workshops, over 50 participants, you can see there some of the different workshops, that was our strategic plan working team. Surveys, over 27,000 survey responses from 11,000, 11,000 students, staff, families and community members. Now I have it on good account that our strategic plan outreach generated more community participation than that of another district named LA Unified down the road. Just, just saying with largest in the nation. So that just shows how much our community and our teachers and our staff were involved in making sure their feedback was heard. And so through, with our partners, through, we engaged the experts in using, gathering all this information, applying artificial intelligence, all those things to generate what we want our strategic plan to be focused on. And so the structure of our plan that you're going to see tonight begins with themes. These are the overarching areas, the intentions for the future. The focus areas then are how we're going to realize that intention. The initiatives are actions that we're going to take or the steps that we're going to take, and the actions are the specific items, right? And so it kind of goes from broad all the way down to very narrow. And so how does that look? So here we go. And our board, of course, you're aware of this. We shared this at, at our last board workshop, and you had a chance to provide feedback as well as our district team. Our three themes are, the first one, high expectations and high achievement. We set clear, consistent and ambitious expectations for learning that allow us to reach our highest potential, creating opportunities for all students and staff. Empowering students, the second theme. Create and maintain learning environments that are set for every student, set every student up for success by supporting their well-being and ensuring they thrive. And third, engaging the community. We trust and partner with our parents, families and community to create meaningful lasting relationships to further our mission. From each focus, from each theme, then there are focus areas. And I'm not going to read all of the detail, but under high, under high expectations, high achievement, academic achievement, collaboration, faculty and staff development, technology and innovative approaches. Those are the areas we're going to focus on to make that theme happen. In other words, right, to make that theme become a reality. And that focus area will then have actions and initiatives under them, right, to get it even more narrow. You can see here in empowering students, obviously equitable access and resources, we have to have that. We have to support learning and growth. How we provide reliable services to support academic, you see behavioral and social emotional, because it's not one in isolation. Extracurricular development, facilities and safety, right? We have to have the facilities and safety process to support learning happening. And third, engaging the community. Effective communication, you see that empowers and engages diverse audiences. Community involvement, foster community, family engagement to inform decision-making and initiatives, right? Families have to be part of the decision-making process. And then strengthen our recruitment systems to cultivate partnerships, enhance programs for students, family and community. So this is the action that the board will be taking next month will be to approve the outline of the strategic plan, to approve the themes and the focus areas. That's the role of the board, right? To set the goals, to set the vision. Now, how we make that happen through our initiatives, that becomes the work of the working team, that becomes the work of the district to determine how we're going to make that happen. What are the programs? What are the strategies? What are the things that we're going to put in place? And how we implement it through the actions, you're going to see in just a minute. Whatever we end up doing, connected to the strategic plan, we're going to study. We're going to take time to design it. And then we're going to implement it. And then we're going to monitor it, right, and adjust and continuously improve. And so let me take you now a little bit more narrow into what this will actually look like. And so if you will, for a minute, think about the first theme that we talked about, high expectations and high achievement. That's still very broad, right? That's our ideal. That's the board setting the vision. Our focus area, and remember there are four, so I'm giving an example of one focus area under that first theme. So I just pulled out academic achievement and preparedness. Now, each focus area is going to have initiatives. There may be one, there may be multiple initiatives. An example here, I, I just, we just created for the purpose of demonstration was increased advanced learning opportunities. If we increase advanced learning opportunities for students, that's going to help them achieve academically, and therefore that will meet high expectations and high achievement expectation. But well, how do we increase advanced learning opportunities? Here's where the actions come in. So each initiative will have actions that are aligned to it to make that happen. There will be more than one action, right? So let me just make sure everybody knows, right? Like, that's not the only thing we're going to do to increase advanced learning opportunities. This is just an example, right? So you can see how it works. So an example here might be, maybe we need to develop a gifted and talented program for elementary school students. Well, that just doesn't happen overnight. We have to study. So year one may just simply be, we study effective programs across the state. We study and canvas our parents here. What do you want our, our program to look like? We talk to teachers. What should it look like? Year two might be design. So the district team and others that are working, design what this might look like. Year three may be implement, but it may be a pilot, or maybe it's full-scale implementation, right? And some of the phases may work together, right? You're going to see a different one in a minute. Year four, implement and monitor it. And then year five and beyond, monitoring, continuously improve. Why is it important that we have a strategic approach for implementing a strategic plan? Well, these things may have budget implications. They may have human resources staffing implications. They may have operations impact, building space, right? And so this gives time for the district to align all of those resources to make sure when it does go live, whatever the action might be, that it is successful. And so I'll just do one more example, just for the sake of kind of seeing how it works, right? Engaging the community was our third pillar. Community involvement and collaboration is the focus area. So an example initiative might be, we want to increase parent and family involvement in school. Now again, there'll be lots of things that we do to make that happen, right? This is just an example of one sample action. So it might be simply that one action might be, we decide we want to make sure every school has an active PTA or PTO. Right? So in the case of that, almost half of our schools already have that. So that's an example of an action that may go through a study, design and implement all in one year. And that is one that doesn't necessarily have a budget impact or a human resource impact or an operations impact, right? So not every action will have all of those categories, and not every action will take five years or more to make happen. Right? But what I think is important that people hear too, is as we work on developing the initiatives and the actions that will go with them for the focus areas, it will be also done in a collaborative approach. Every focus area will have a team of individuals that serve as advisors. Teachers, parents, community members and others will be part of that advisory. They will support the district working team who's working to create the actual initiatives and actions in a feedback loop. So we'll have a group of people who are engaged in, let's say, going back to engaging the community centered around effective communication. So we'll have an advisory of parents, of teachers, of others. And they're going to advise us on what are some initiatives or things that we could do to help make effective communication happen, right? They won't be the decision group, but they'll be the ones that we run ideas by, and they help generate ideas for us. And so for our community and parents and others that wonder, how are, and teachers, how are we going to be involved in what the initiatives and actions we ultimately create? That's the process that's going to happen this fall and into the spring. And so you can see there, the working team, the district team, the experts, the knowledge individuals that are actually going to be doing and building the work, the budget, the operations teams. And then the advisory to provide impact feed, input, feedback, right? Teachers, classified students, parents, families, students as well. I want to make a point of saying students will also be part of that, especially around initiatives that impact them. And so you can see here, our work is beginning, presenting this first draft to the board. It'll come final draft in November, but before that, already in processes developing what these advisories will look like. And then we will keep the board updated each month on the development of initiatives and actions that align to this. Ultimately, in the spring, then coming back with the complete package of those things as well. So the first step tonight was again, first read, no action. And then in November, we'll come back with the board to basically approve, or hopefully approve, the themes and the focus areas for our strategic plan. So very excited about this work. I think it captures the, 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 the thoughts behind our beliefs and commitments and our theory of action. I think it captures the voice of our community, the voice of our teachers, our staff. And then also demonstrates how we're going to keep that involved as we go through the development of the specifics of the plan. So Madam President, excited about this work. Thank you to everybody that contributed and looking forward to how this is going to help guide our district for years to come, regardless of who's standing up here in front of you. Hopefully it's me, but that will be guiding our district from now on. And when you think about budget and operations, HRD doesn't have to guess, well, in two years, what am I going to need? Budget doesn't have to think about, well, in three years, are we going to have the resources to do something, right? Are we going to have the space available? And so it's really going to bring a new strategic approach to how we do business in Visel Unified. That concludes my report.
That's awesome. Any board questions or comments? Thank you so much, and I will be alive the next 10 years to see all the fruition. All right, 11.2 Notice of Intended Employees Certified Personnel and Approval of Variable Term Waiver Requests for CCSD certification. Mr. Dillon.
Thank you. So I am requesting that the board approve these waivers. These are for some unique, specific hard to fill positions. They're unique in the scope of their work, and therefore we are requesting credential to add on to the base credential of these existing employees.
May I have a motion to approve the variable term waiver request CCSD certification?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Everybody votes before we make a motion. Well, there was a motion by Casebeers Saleno, second by, oh, by Board Member Neeler. And second by Casebeers Saleno. I guess it passed. Okay.
Student Board Representative votes yes, and motion passes unanimously.
All right, 11.3 Notice of Intended Employees Certified Personnel and Approval of Provisional Internment Permit Requests. Assistant Superintendent Dillon.
Yes, thank you, Board President Gomoyen, Board and Superintendent Schram. My request is that the board approve this PIP Provisional Internship Permit to allow us to move forward with the teacher indicated and provide them the opportunity needed to move forward with becoming intern eligible.
May I have a motion to approve the PIP request?
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay. Let's get out of here, guys. Okay, on a motion by Dr. Otto, on a second by Casebeers Saleno, all in favor. Okay, come on. I vote yes. There we go.
Student Board Representative votes yes, and motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
11.4 Board Policy Revision Adoptions Deletions. First read, Superintendent Schram.
Yes, as the board knows, we've engaged in our policy subcommittees and board members have had a chance to review policies with any additions or deletions. And then those will be brought back for consent on the next board meeting in November.
Any questions, comments? Alrighty. Then 11.5 Warrant List, August 25th, 2023 through September 29th, 2023.
Good evening. This is our routine item for the warrant list for August 25th through September 29th, 2023 for your approval.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Nope, there you go.
All right, on a motion by Board Member Vegas, second by
Wasn't me.
Gabe, oh, Casebeers Saleno, all in favor.
See, now you have them scared to vote. They're waiting. Student Board Representative votes yes, and motion passes unanimously.
And thank you for hanging with us. The meeting is adjourned.